On, do I dare?
Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President, on your call.
You need one?
We haven't had to do that. Trenton City Council Meeting, Thursday, November the 7th, 5:30 PM. This meeting is officially called to order. Let us stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Presente.
Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Present y presente.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Edward Cologie, Legislative Council. And City Attorney Wes Bridges.
Present.
Thank you. On your call, Madam President.
Please continue with the invocation.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, it's my understanding we have some presentations this evening. They are, the first on our list is Joanne Kennedy.
Before we begin, excuse me, pardon into interruption. Believe we had a walk-on resolution?
Uh, yes, Madam President, we have two walk-on resolutions.
Let's begin with that.
Certainly. Two walk-on resolutions that we have are Resolution, and this is number twenty-four dash four seventy-five. And this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, in support of women's space, communities of light, for the year twenty twenty-four. And Madam President, if you like, I can read that into the record.
The title is fine.
Understood.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to our second walk-on resolution. Resolution twenty-four dash four seventy-six. Resolution consenting to appointment of Maria Richardson as Business Administrator for the City of Trenton.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Four seventy-six. We have, um, the mayor here tonight. If you'd like to give a few words, Mayor, before we continue with the business of the city. Thank you. Turn the mic on.
Yep, sorry, red means go. Uh, good evening, uh, Council President and members, distinguished members of council and, uh, fellow residents of the city. Um, thank you for, uh, voting for, um, uh, uh, Marie Richardson, uh, and confirming her as, uh, our Business Administrator. Um, I did prepare something, but I don't think I have to now. Um, but you all know Maria, she's been here.
You can, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
She's been here since two thousand and eighteen in the capacity as our Recreation Director. Uh, and then she took over, um, as our Health, uh, Director as well. She was very instrumental, not only in improving our parks. She's right now in, in the process of refurbishing twenty-six, uh, parks. Initiated that, and our current, uh, Acting Director is carrying that out. Uh, but she also was instrumental in our COVID response. And once Adam Cruz, our beloved, uh, Business Administrator, uh, retired and, uh, ninety days ago, Maria took the reins. And I think she's done an extraordinary job. I will add that, um, twenty applicants, uh, applied for that position. Uh, they were screened by DCA with the City of Trenton. They were whittled down to three choices, and Maria prevailed on, on all fronts, so. We do thank, uh, council for their input and, uh, DCA's, uh, cooperation. And, uh, we are ecstatic that we have now a permanent Business Administrator in the city. Thanks so much.
Business Administrator Richardson, is there anything that you'd like to say briefly?
Good evening, Council President and Council Members. I just want to thank you for the trust that you continue to deposit in me. I want to sincerely thank, uh, Mayor Reed Goseiora for choosing me for this, um, new position, to serve the city in a different capacity. I continue to, to look forward to working together with you to enhance the operations of the city, to offer the residents the best services that we are able to afford for the residents and to foster, um, continuous and, and sustainable growth. So thank you all for your trust. I continue to be committed to transparency, accountability, and excellence. So thank you for allowing me to serve in this new capacity, the city that I have called home for thirty-some years. Thank you.
Ma- we voted. Is it Madam President? We voted to walk it on.
Yes.
I, I.
Mr. Garcia, you were supposed to check me on that. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia, call for the vote.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a, okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash four seventy-six?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
So we're voting for the approval of it now?
Approval.
Okay, yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Webber, and yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Everybody's a comedian tonight.
I defer to the President.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on, yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carried. Resolution approved.
Go ahead, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I needed to say that I would like to continue to be a good role model for my granddaughter who is here. And thank you to my husband, who is here too. So thank you so much.
Before we continue, um, in due form, are there any council members that would like to say anything, briefly, before we move on to the next, to about Director Richardson? Councilwoman Frisbee.
So, good evening, um, everyone. I just want to say that, um, I am so glad that, I, this was an easy yes for me, um, with voting, Director Richardson, it's good to take that interim off the, uh, off of there. Uh, it was a no-brainer for me. I'm so glad that the city knows the value, knows the treasure that we have in you, and that we did know that hiring from within and utilizing our own, especially when we know that you have the knowledge, you have the understanding, you have the communications and all the tools that you need to help move our city forward. I'm so glad to know that you're here and that you're staying and that you're being elevated as it is so appropriate. Um, I've had the pleasure of working, not, well, not working, knowing you and the work that you do, um, for over, oh, God, my son is twenty-two, twenty-one years. Um, so it is, um, a pleasure and I'm grateful and I commend you and congratulations.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, President President. I just want to, uh, add that, uh, I just really happy that we could, uh, approve you tonight because I think you're doing an exceptional job. But also, I want to thank you for your seamless transition into this. Uh, and as Mr. Cruz moved on, uh, it hasn't, you have not lost a beat. This department is functioning just as well as it did before, maybe even better. But also making sure that your replacement interim director, Paul Harris, was able to get up and running and keep the good works of your previous department. It's so important, particularly with our parks. So thank you so much for what you're doing. Look forward to working with you further.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Felicidades, señorita. That's what I call her, señorita. Um, like, uh, Councilwoman Frisbee said, this was an easy yes. Um, we appreciate all of the work that you have done. I want to say thank you for not only this, for you elevating to this position, but for the work that you did in the past, wearing two hats, and you made it look so graceful and so seamless. And I know it wasn't an easy task, so I'm not, I have no doubt that you exceed in this position. And I want to say congratulations otra vez.
Council Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Uh, BA Richardson, I just want to say that, um, we are all proud of you because not only do you do this job well, and you have sat into this seat seamlessly, as my colleagues have said, uh, you know, I don't like echoing what everybody has already said. Um, but you lead with transparency, good, bad, or indifference. And that's something that we need in this city. And you do know the city inside and out, you know what the city needs, you exercise that. Um, you're very accessible all the time. You are readily resourceful, and I just know that you are going to lead the city into the direction that we need. And I know that, um, Director Harris is doing the great job that he's doing because he was under your leadership for such a great long time. So I do look forward to everything that you are going to provide to the city moving forward because we need greatness, we need good leadership in the city, in everybody. So thank you. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Maria, congratulations again. I did get a chance to pre-congratulate you when, um, I got word that you would be, um, walked on tonight. Um, so I, I'm just always in awe of your work in the city. You more than exceed expectations in every role that you're in, and you're more than qualified. So congratulations again. Thank you for your service.
BA Richardson, we are excited tonight, proud of you and your efforts. You've done a tremendous job, looking forward to seeing you do so much more, your leadership, your authenticity, right, your vision for how you'd like to see things moving forward, working collaboratively with the mayor and with the rest of the administration. Um, I know that we're going up from here, so I'm excited for the continued growth and transition for the city, for this administration. And again, shout out to Paul Harris, who has been under your leadership as well as Dr. Diego. You transitioned from two positions, right, and now into one. And so looking at the work that the both of them have been doing is very encouraging and inspiring, and I'm excited to see what else comes along the way. I know that the best is yet to come. Congratulations. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President. I believe that brings us back to the presentations this evening. And the first presentation we have listed is Joanne Kennedy Brown, Rojo's Roasters, Ginger Peaches, regarding docket Resolution twenty-four dash four forty-seven. And to the presenter, I believe, and I'll ask the President now, the allotted time.
Ten minutes for each presentation.
You'll have ten minutes for each presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, Council Members and Members of the community. Uh, thank you for having me. First, you're probably like, what are you doing here? So let me explain to you how I got here. I'm the entrepreneur and the culinary developer behind the Ginger Peach, which celebrates its ten-year anniversary this December. I am the head ice cream maker and the entrepreneur behind Melba Ice Creamery in Lawrenceville. And I recently became the new owner of Rojo's Roastery, which was once located in Lambertville, New Jersey. So how did I end up here? I am no stranger to trying to bring my business into Trenton. And I'm going to tell you what made me want to do that. Back in two thousand and sixteen, when Ginger Peach hit its peak, that, like, that's the business that I am known for. Tons of units are produced out of that store on a daily basis. And when I was trying to hire for our highest-paid positions of lead bakers, I had tons of candidates coming from the City of Trenton to apply for these roles. But they couldn't work with us because they couldn't get to my location at the time that the work needed to be done. I realized back then that we had a barrier to entry for us to attract the talent who would be the future of culinary baking for me. And one of the biggest things is a lot of these candidates looked like me. And I tried to get into Trenton. I worked on a project where I tried to buy the building that once housed the Hamilton Jewelers, right next to Mercer County Community College, and that fell through. But that didn't stop my advocacy for the city or the people who live in it. I continue to work very closely with task. I speak at the high schools for culinary days or talking about careers. And then time went by and a pandemic came. And then I was approached by the person that owns the building that the Starbucks once stood in. Do you know what this person came to me to do? They wanted me to bake on behalf of a Starbucks franchise. My answer was no. Do you know why? Because for too long, the small businesses who are the backbone of the cities around here are overlooked for amazing opportunities and growth within our communities. We are the ones that support the soccer program or go to the high school. And you want me to bake for a major corporation's franchise? Absolutely not. Small World Coffee, who came before me, Rojo's Roastery, One Up One Down, Cafe Ohala, these are all roasters who live here, who are roasting here. And they weren't put in that space. And whether or not they know that this is the fight we are fighting, this is the fight that I am fighting. So I politely declined. But I said, I've got a better idea for you. Back in March, when Rojo's Roastery flooded back in twenty twenty-one from Hurricane Ida, the owner, who was in his seventies, David Waldman, could not carry the company into the future. He asked me to take over. I was overwhelmed, Ginger Peach is busting at the seams. I now am opening a new ice cream shop. I didn't have the time or space, but he gave me the company and asked me to shepherd it into the future. Part of that requires building a roastery. So I said, you need a tenant? I need to build a roastery. And this beautifully aligns with what I've been trying to do for the last eight years. So today, I am here in regards to the resolution to help us make the best space possible. This facility will not only act as a manufacturing facility that will allow us to roast our coffee, not just for my present concepts, but also the wholesale customers that we fulfill, including the Graduate Hotel that's in Princeton, the W Hotel in Hoboken, and many other small businesses. In addition to that, Ginger Peach will move sixty percent of its production to this space to help us continue to grow within that and support our different levels of business, whether it's wholesale, nationwide shipping, et cetera. In addition, this space will act as a teaching facility, which was kind of my end goal for all of this. Uh, Mercer County Community College for years has expressed interest in working closely with us on this. And I love the fact that now it's not just about teaching baking, but teaching roasting, teaching the proper way to make coffee, teaching retail skills. I am incredibly qualified for this with over twenty years of experience in this field. I have a degree in economics, and I took a twenty thousand dollar investment in Ginger Peach and turned it into one of the state's top bakeries. So today, I am very pleased to be here. I am here to answer any questions that you may have. I'm very, very excited. It feels like I'm finally checking something off of a list that has taken far too long. But here we are. Is there any questions that I can answer for anyone?
So before my colleagues begin, because I'm sure they're ready to go, I just want to thank you for this presentation and for saying yes to the City of Trenton to want to come here. I'm glad that we're able to hear what it is that you're presenting because at first for me, it was kind of like, they there, they here, why are we doing this? I'm also an educator at Trenton Central High School. I'm the teacher leader, actually, within the restaurant and business community at the high school. And we have culinary, which falls within that small learning community. So as you talk about educating and partnerships and things of that nature, my ears perk up. I'm also an adjunct teacher at Mercer County, um, as well, Professor. So, um, anything dealing with the, the kids and everything definitely sparks my interest and my desire because, um, you know, our kids take an interest in that as well. So I'm excited for what's to come. I thank you for coming forward with us and again, saying yes to Trenton. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Um, first, I just want to say, um, congratulations on your, all of your success. Uh, from I, what I've heard ever since the rumors started that you'd be coming to Trenton, uh, everyone has had magnificent things to say and that they can't wait to try, uh, your baked goods. Uh, so I do just have a couple, uh, questions.
Sure.
Uh, one, could you tell me, like, how you actually came up with the name? Because it's a very cool name.
Rojo's or the Ginger Peach?
Actually, the Ginger Peach.
Okay, so. I'm a child of food stamps. My dad, um, my dad had polio. He had caught polio before the vaccine came out. It debilitated his arms. My mother was a high school teacher. What we know about teachers, they're definitely not paid what they need to be paid. I'm one of five children, and I grew up in a multi-generational household. And things were always tough. My grandmother is from Georgia, she's a peach. And my first exposure to baking was through my grandmother. And you can imagine that when you grow up in a household where there's not a lot of money, if any, kids are told no a lot. Can I have that? No. Can I have that? No. Don't touch that, don't sit there, right, you get it. Um, my grandmother was, had this beautiful, just beautiful, southern, soft approach. And I, when I used to bake with her, she would let me pick whatever I could, ever I wanted out of a cookbook. And I would say, can we make this? And we never had the ingredients on hand to actually make those things. And we never had the ingredients on hand to actually make those things, nor could we buy them. And she would say, oh, don't worry, darling, we'll just ginger it up. And that was her way of saying, work with what you have to make what you want. And the entire mission statement and ideology behind Ginger Peach is work with the resources that we have now to turn the same flour, sugar, and cream into different things. I could buy lychee now if I wanted to, but how does that support our local farmers? Working with what New Jersey provides and what is accessible to us is important. And that's why it's called the Ginger Peach.
Thank you. That's a beautiful story. Just a couple more questions.
Of course.
So regarding needs for the location.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Just for the needs of the location, transportation. So I, I used to be on zoning board, so that's where this is coming from. Do you need any additional changes to maybe access for pickups, deliveries and so forth? For, you know, what the business is going to be getting into there?
I will say, one of the really cool things is that we have strategic partners in place that are willing to jump through hoops to get us what we need. All the egresses are perfectly sized for what we need to do. And all of our deliveries arrive between 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM in the morning, which means you will never see them. Most people will never see them. We do our work at night. So what that allows is us to freely move product in and out of our locations without having to worry. Are we getting in the way of something? Are we blocking traffic? As of right now, we haven't identified any issues that would prevent us from be able to operate within the existing space.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Of course.
And then my final question is, and I love what you, your whole, everything you said just was phenomenal. But yeah, you have so clearly identified the idea that we do not have many jobs here where people can simply walk to.
I love that.
And it just brings me back to even, you know, the painting that's behind us, the old Roebling factories and the steel, people could just walk to their job. And it's just something unfortunately, we're not back to yet, but hopefully we'll be soon with businesses such as yours. Do you have a estimate of how many employees you might be able to hire?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
That, that is opening staff. If I do my job right, 50 when all is said and done. Majority of them full-time positions. If people want them, we run a flex schedule. We understand that people's lives are complicated. They involve a lot of pieces and moving parts. And we believe in scheduling our employees around their existing lives. So while we may say we want to bring in 20 full-time, six part-time, we may meet 40 amazing part-time candidates and we're just like, well, that's what it's going to be. But 26 is our projected opening team, not counting the team of Ginger Peach, who will be here for training and support. Oh, and our goal is also to hire 80% of those people from the Trenton zip codes. Hopefully. I hope people want jobs. Please tell people to come get jobs with me.
Thank you very much and good luck, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Brown.
Yes.
So I love your passion. I love your positive energy that you, when you talk, you're, it comes through with joy. I love that you want to make sure that I, it moved me when you said that you realized that so many of the individuals were coming from Trenton and they couldn't get there. So I was, it, it's important to me that you were paying attention to that and that you knew that it was a good business decision to come and invest here in our city. I am grateful that we are going, that you're going to help with our economy because Trenton is, is actually in a, an incredible position right now. And we are moving so many things forward and our economy is definitely on the rise. And you're going to be a major part of that. And I know that because my husband's going to be a major part of your business since he knows that there's a certain hour of the day that if he does not get there at a certain time, he is not going to get those nice soft little buns that you have, you make. And you only make them once during the day. Once they're gone, they're gone. And he knows and he tells me that. So Mayor Bobbitt, they didn't, they don't have to go rushing. He can come right here and invite him over here once you get this up and running. I love that you're, the, what you come with, your experience, the 20 years plus, that you're not starting from scratch. This is something that you know. And we, so we know that all we've done, and we've done right and done in excellence. And I'm glad that you're saying that you want to make sure that you're paying attention to the Trenton zip code when it comes to hiring. That is very important to me, that our residents know that they are going to get priority, that they are, this is being done with them in mind, that we're not putting, inserting something and then all outsiders benefit from it, but actually our city will benefit from it. So I just want to thank you. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say, and also I wanted to acknowledge what you did say about giving back. Because a lot of times, a lot of businesses, the large businesses, it's difficult to get them to give back. Although I will say this Starbucks, under the previous management, they were amazing. The young woman Stephanie was here. She did amazing in our community. And it shifted once she passed. But I'm excited about what you're going to do, but you absolutely were speaking truth to power that, that most organizations, you got to write a letter to them. They've got to get information from, get it to their corporate office and their corporate office has to see whether or not they're worthy. And it's, it's that crazy domino effect. There's a whole bunch of red tape.
Yes.
So thank you for acknowledging that. And I, I know that you're going to give back to the community and I just look forward to having you here.
I appreciate that. And in response, but part of the reason why the giving back component is a core of our business is this, this community literally made me. I'm a James Beard fellow. The odds of that are slim to none. One in 20 women in this country are chosen a year for this to happen. And it's because my community pushed me into the spotlight. You are not allowed to ride to the top floor without sending the elevator back down.
Thank you. Any other council colleagues? Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Madam President, we have another presentation on our agenda this evening. And that is, I hope I say this correctly, this Archer Law Firm, Julia Fall and Gil Seton. Did I say that right?
Yes, and I'm with Archer Public Affairs, not the law firm.
I'm sorry?
Archer Public Affairs, not the law firm.
Archer Public Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll correct that.
Okay. My name's Julia Fall. I'm also here with Jeff Gredone, who's representing Gil Seton, who's joining us via video conference. He's in California and we appreciate you guys giving us a little bit of time. I'll give you some brief background on the project. We began talking to council last December for the Rowan Towers redevelopment project. We were able to make, get a $10 million GRRP award from the federal government through the housing and urban development. That fund is necess, we, we only get that $10 million award upon financing. So the Rowan Towers property is working through the HMFA process as well as the Aspire process and also seeking a pilot extension and a new pilot upon completion, upon completion of that other financing. So we came last December to talk to the council about this redevelopment project. We heard specifically about some other concerns, so we redeveloped our project to, to address council needs. We then met with the council, council subcommittee on housing, as well as several times with the city's, the city's housing team. We also worked directly with DCA to acquire a waiver to be allowed on to, to be, for this pilot to be considered. And we've been taking feedback sort of over the course of the last year to try and develop this into a project that was really worthwhile. So the goal for today would be to move the pilot approval process forward. And then at our next meeting, we'll, we'll also be looking to have a pilot extension on the pilot that currently exists for that project. I'll have Jeff Gredone join us to talk a little bit about the details of the redevelopment. And Gil is here to answer any questions that you guys have. And obviously, we're open to any comments.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council, members of the community. We have a little bit of time tonight and mostly here to, to answer your questions. Familiar with the property, it's going to be a rehabilitation that's going to include revamp of the plumbing system, different types of updating, the fire and life safety, emergency generator systems, HVAC, all things that you would consider. But really, the, the most important thing in my mind is to address any questions that you might have about the project going forward. And most importantly, Gil Seton, who's available here via, via Zoom to answer any questions that you might have specifically about the project.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions at this time? Any comments at this time? Anything? Councilwoman Frisbee?
So yes, so one, thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for the presentation and the update because you were here last year, as I do remember. And I am, I'm encouraged by this project because this community, they're in need of it. This is a lot of our, there are many seniors, many seniors that occupy this building. And having the rehabilitation be the, especially HVAC, that's dealing with your health straight out. The elevators, the lead, all of that, all that needs to be updated. So thank you for that. My question is, how are you planning on doing the rehabilitation? Are you going to start from the top? How are you going, and how will the residents be impacted by it? How have you figured out that portion?
Sure. And that, and that's probably a question that's best suited for Gil, who is on the screen there. Gil, are you there?
I'm here. Can you see me if, maybe?
Can't see, but we can definitely hear you.
Okay, so thank, okay. Thanks for your consideration today. The renovation, and it's a major, major renovation of the property. The plumbing system will be completely replaced. As a result, the way that the renovation will proceed will be by plumbing stack. And so, because the water will need to be turned off for, for each plumbing stack in the building while those pipes are tied into, to the units. And so the plan is, we have a certain amount of natural vacancy and we're letting, and rather than refilling units, we're allowing that to build. And then we will have plumbing stacks that are vacant. You know, by example, if we had five plumbing stacks, plumbing stack number one would be vacant first. And then we would renovate that stack entirely with no one in the unit. And then once those were renovated, we would take people and, for example, the second plumbing stack, move them to the first stack, which is now renovated. And now we would have the second stack vacant and we would renovate that. And we would move through the building like that. So does that, does that answer your question?
That does. Thank you very much, Gil, for that. And I don't know, I was trying to look up the, the actual front of it because it was the other, the, the front of that building, the, the grounds of the front of it. Are we doing anything with the outside of that to do, add more green space for that, to give the residents more?
We have an allowance of, to, to upgrade the exterior space. At this point, with respect to the, what I would call the soft scape or the greenscape, we don't have a specific plantings picked out, but we do have the intention of resurfacing the basketball court there as well as putting in new basketball onboard and rim and net, as well as kind of upgrading the rest of the area that, that exists there. We're also adding a transit stop because there's a bus stop right in front of the property. So with a bench and, and a covered area so that residents have a covered place to sit and wait for, for transit. So that, that's the, the, the intention there.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other council members with any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your, for your time and attention and hospitality.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. At this time, I believe we've reached public comment. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. And to the public, public comment will, Madam President, we have eight individuals listed for public comment. Public comment will be.
Five minutes.
Five minutes and, five minutes for each individual. You may address any item that you wish. Please know the council is not obligated to respond. The first person listed is Karan Green.
Mr. Garcia, did you mark Councilman Harrison as present?
I did. I have him as 605. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I just had a very.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, yes. My name's Karan Green and my address is 247 Church Street. All right. So I just had a quick clarification or want to click a quick clarification on the resolution 224 dash 444, which is designating the city of Trenton, County of Mercer, as in need of rehabilitation. So I just wanted to clarify to see if this is making the entire city a redevelopment area. Because I know a bunch of business owners that would love to open up businesses throughout the city. But because they're not in redevelopment areas, they're not able to. Or it would be a lot more difficult. So I just wanted a little bit more clarification to see if this resolution was that. And if so, then how long would it take to be approved? If possible. Thank you.
Eleanor Lake.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eleanor Lake. I'm from the U.S. Virgin Island and I've been treated very badly in Trenton. I work, for the longest I've been here, I've been working. And I think that as an elderly woman, I shouldn't be treated in the way that I'm treated. So now I'm going to tell you about what it is. I live on 221 Spring Street, Trenton, New Jersey. My home is, the roof is coming off. The man that I talked to, Isles, about helping me, and they told me, they said, to go and call Recreation in City Hall. I called and they told me to come on down there. When I reached there, the man by the name of Moses, he was very nice. I thought he was a preacher. I said to him, here I am, Isley brought, Isley told me that I should come down here for help, if I need help. Moses in turn told me, he said, I got, we got the money. Now you do as I tell you and we'll do what we can for you. He sent me to the bank about three times, three times for the same information in the blazing sun. This time it's about 100 degrees. This is in the summertime when it was blazing hot. I have high blood pressure. I can't drive, so I come down here, me and my husband and my little grandbaby, catching caps with the money I don't have. Okay? When I reached down here, I gave him the papers that he sent me for. In turns, now he tell me, I want you to fill them out and then when you done, bring them back. I come back down here and I brought the papers back to the man, okay? When I came, give them to him, I didn't hear nothing from him anymore, nothing at all. So I come down here and I open, I'm looking for him. When I run into him, I say, why didn't you call me to let me know what's going on? He said, didn't you get a letter? I say, a letter from who and why? I hope you all understanding me clearly. And if you don't, please let me know. And I'll say what I have to say again. He said to me, bring the, I fill out the papers. And when I bring them to him, he, after that, then he said, he get a letter from his boss. And it's that the, the job that is needed, it's not really a big deal. This can wait. I said, how could it wait? If it's a small deal, why would you wait till it come a big deal to do it? He talking, he turn off and he say, I'll be back. And he said, just wait. When I come back, he tell me that it's not nothing I can do. Then he recommend me to a man by the name of Bobbitt and he was supposed to. Then he recommend me to a man by the name of Babette, and he was supposed to take over his, his part. Well, he told me that he is in, Moses tell him what's going on, and it was so long. The whole thing is, make a long story short, no, they had me running up and down, getting people to come and take, see what's going on with the roof and how much it would cost, okay? I didn't get no word from them. And got me up and down, all up on Olden Avenue, all out in South Trenton, looking for these people that fix roof. And when I get them, everyone told me that the roof is almost about to fall in, because one side of the roof, the squirrel them was eating it out. And you could stare in the bed sometime, it frightened you, I think somebody broken in the house, they having a party upstairs. Well, nobody, everybody that I recommend, nobody has shown up, because then nobody's calling. Moses wait until the Thursday, this is all the time I was coming down here. But I got sick, because I kind of cut my toe with a razor, and it had me down. So, today, I'm hemming, hemping, and I come on down here just the same. Because I hear, if you got a problem, and it's not solved, come on down here. And I hope somebody is hearing me and will feel sorry for me. I'm eighty years old. I paid my dues to work in Trenton, New Jersey. I'm from the U.S. Virgin Islands, and I have rights to be in America just the same. Because we have the same flag, the same president, and all the rules that is handed on here is handed over here. Helping me, because he called me Thursday, and the.
Ma'am, I believe that is your time.
Eleanor, I said.
Miss.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Excuse me, Ms. Lake, this is your time. That is your time, your time, Mrs. Love.
Thank you, ma'am. That's your time. I'm sorry. Thank you. That's your time.
Yes.
Because nobody wants to have.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. That's enough. That is your time.
All right.
Marlene Dublinsky.
Honorable council members, and congratulations on those reelected. My name is Marlene Dublinsky. I live at two fifteen East Front Street. I have never been so nervous to speak publicly. I came to Trenton after a very good career, and I lived a year in the mission. I know a lot of people on the streets here that are homeless, that are desperate, that have various, various circumstances and situations. I used to go to Camden in two thousand fifteen, and when I would come off the train, they would offer me everything under the sun. People were there, no offense, please don't take me wrong, because I've worked twenty years as an addiction therapist, ten years as a psychiatric physician assistant. And you would see people just out of it, just out of it, on, on drugs and people selling drugs. My birthday was Saturday. I went Saturday, I took the Riverline, and then I took the bus over into Philadelphia. I did not see anything happening there. It was quiet. They moved the methadone clinic. I've heard council members say before that we learn from other cities. I'm not a civil engineer. I'm not an expert on anything. We learn from other cities. They moved the methadone clinic, and they cleaned that whole area. I would like to respectfully submit to you that they said they could not move the bus stop at Broad and State by the Crown Chicken to tell who's loitering and who is not, and they moved the bus stop. There was a group, a hate group downtown on Saturdays. I contacted Marge Wallace at the time by text. I called the police, and I called the Anti-Defamation League in New York City. I never saw them there again. One citizen in one city can do something for this. I would like to respectfully submit to you that if we move the methadone clinic on Perry, you would see a lot of the downtown clean up with the loitering. I've noticed that Warren Street, where the state workers go, is going very well. It's growing. I know Joe Festa, the barber there, who owns the property, is a wonderful man. But I would like to make a suggestion that we could build up our downtown again. The Dollar Store went out, the circuit, the Blue, City Blue went out, the Rite Aid went out. We could build up downtown again if we were able to clean up the problem. And I'm not saying just throw the people out and just get rid of the clinic, one, two, three. We need to help people, and I believe that, and I know that we can. But if we could move the clinic, it feeds the downtown drug trade. And the reason I know that is when I go to Dunkin' Donuts every so often, and I stand on the corner having a cigarette, I know the people who come down there and what they're doing. I might get killed for saying this, but I know the people. I know what's going on. And I respectfully suggest that we could please do something about cleaning up downtown. And I think the first way to begin is to do something about the clinic. Because you see what's on Perry Street, you see what's on Broad, you see what's on State Street, and I know the people. I know them by name. I know them by their nicknames. I talk to them. They talk to me. We're friendly. But I would want the help, and I, I myself have had issues, and I do, I am currently in a recovery process. And I would like to see other people be able to do that, because it will change their lives. It turns your whole world around when you start to recover and you start to get a better way of life. And it can happen for the people there. But it can also be an opportunity for citizens to, again, enjoy the downtown, because everything closes up on the weekends when the state workers are gone. And it's not fair to the rest of the city, ninety-four thousand residents. I hope I don't sound incorrect. I hope I'm not being disrespectful. I hope my heart's in the right place, because I have empathy. I don't want to see people get hurt. I don't want to see people not get the help they need. But I think the clinic, and I was a prescriber, I prescribed, was a prescriber, psychiatric prescriber in Oklahoma, Minnesota, North Dakota, and Pennsylvania. I held medical licenses. And the doctors there are prescribing to these people that are on the methadone, things that could give them an overdose. I don't understand their prescribing methods, because I wouldn't have prescribed that way. But that's what I want to propose to you. And maybe I should have spoken first with the councilwoman of the ward, but I wanted to come forward and say, my heart's in the right place. I want to see people get help. I know people that have died, some had cancer. One just told me tonight he has cancer. And I know different people there. If we could move the clinic like Camden moved the clinic, they're about to build a beautiful new Walter Rand. I saw the rendition on the news. So, I don't want to go on much further. I hope I'm being respectful. I'm frightened to death, because I never get nervous publicly speaking. And I want to thank all of you, and it's wonderful to see all of you. Thank you.
Keon Jones.
How you doing, counsel? Good evening. I'm here because I found out I was on the docket, probably five minutes.
Just need your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm here representing TFD. Keon Jones is my name, like I was saying.
And your address?
I don't live in Trenton.
We still need your address for the record, hon. Thank you.
Fifteen Allegheny. I got a layup, be my personal business. So, I was on a docket for involuntary retirement, submitted by the fire director. I just learned that I was permanently disabled, and I can no longer do the job. I found out in August, and I've got a, a letter probably like the next month, stating that I need to let the fire department know what I'm going to do. The letter was sent to me, but it didn't even tell me how to correspond to him. Shows incompetence. He just want to point that out. I got multiple dis herniated, herniated disc in my back and a broken tailbone. This happened due to a fire truck not having shocks. We had a fire truck that's by OSHA standards, should have been off the road twenty years ago. And it's a Frankenstein truck. It's a ninety-five combined with a ninety-three. The nineteen ninety-five and the nineteen ninety-three truck combined, which is illegal to do. And it shouldn't be in service. I got injured on that truck. And now I'm forced to retire due to my injuries. And there, the fire director wants to push me for involuntary retirement. He was, there was a meeting with the deputy chief and the union stating that they want to push for me to get a accidental retirement. He's want to push to get me forty percent of my pension, which is unfair. They had a meeting about it, and it was supposed to be a meeting with the city lawyer. It was a, I was put on charges because I didn't respond to the letter. I didn't know how to, he didn't give me directions on how to correspond at all. So, now here we are. I'm here to tell you that I do not want to do the involun, it's, it's not an involuntary retirement that I'm seeking. The unions told him what it was. The deputy chief told him what it was, and he impulsively still pushed this forward on the docket. You don't need this type of behavior here in the city. This is a very incompetent leader. He doesn't know what he's doing. I'm sorry, I just got to put that out. He doesn't know what he's doing. You, you need to check his background, where he come from. He's only been a, never been in leadership, only been a firefighter for six years. I've been on it for twelve years. Y'all could put me in that space. Y'all could put anybody in that space, but he, he needs to go. And that's, that's all I really got to say tonight. I wasn't prepared to speak. This is, I was sitting down, eating dinner with my families. This is inconvenient. You can't treat people like that. That's it.
Cordelia Staten.
Good evening, Cordelia Staten, three ten Gardner Avenue. Good evening, Council President and distinguished members. I'm here to congratulate Councilwoman Williams, Councilman Harrison, Councilwoman Frisbee, and, and on their reelection. And I want to say something to the marvelous and amazing South Ward Councilwoman Jenna Figaro Kittenburg. Kittenburg, I'm sorry. Keep your head up. You have done outstanding work in the South Ward. Your work has changed the lives of so many in that community. You addressed a lot of issues that went undone for a very, very long time. Your communications in the, in the South Ward with the residents through your Facebook and even your one-on-one conversations with residents, it resonates. It really does. And although it looks like it's a very tight and tough battle, you stay on that battlefield. You have a lot of people that are supporting you. Stay encouraged. Sometimes you have to just encourage yourself, but I'm encouraging you tonight to go on. I love everything that you're doing. You have exceeded my expectations. You hang in there, Jenna. You hear me? All right. The other thing I want to say is, how about Maria? I've known Maria since the nineties. When, when Trenton first got its Weed and Seed Award. And she came in, and it was just something about her that made her special. She got right to work, and so was so innovative with programs, and I loved her transparency. She's always been like that. And then, when she works with her husband to do productions and to provide entertainment for the city, it's a win-win. She really, she's all that, and I am so glad to see that she has moved up through the city. And now she holds the position of Business Administrator. She's second to none. She really is, and I just wanted to congratulate you as well. The other thing I wanted to say was Paul Harris and the Halloween spectacular in Catwater Park. He did his thing. Yeah, I don't know how many of y'all were able to get out there to it. I went out there for a little while. The entire park, it was so sensational. Paul Harris, if you're in the room, I just want to say you did an excellent job. And I know you work under Maria, and you got a lot of it from there, but I also know you. And I know that Mr. Harris is very innovative and creative himself, and it certainly showed on Halloween night. It was a night for all ages. All the residents had a wonderful time. So, I just wanted to thank him as well. Sometimes y'all don't always get the acknowledgements of the things that you do good, but I like to come and tell you, because you know I come on the other side as well. So, tonight is, tonight is all good. There is one thing I do want to ask you about. I am still waiting to hear about the Senior Advisory Board that was created. And I'm hoping that those appointments will be coming soon, so that we can get busy. There's a lot of things that the seniors are looking for, and there's a lot of seniors who want to be on it. So, please keep your word and get moving. Okay, it's almost the end of the year. So, you know, post haste, as they say, okay? All right. I don't have anything else. I'm on my way to, you know, I'm on the Housing Authority, and there's a championship game today with the thirteen-year-olds. So, I'm going over there to root them off for a little bit. So, God bless you. Take care.
Thank you.
Cool. It's, looks like Jerry. I don't know the last name. Thank you, sir. Please do say so at the microphone.
Excuse me. Good evening, panel. This is new to me. This is my first time participating in a, a meeting like this, student meeting.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt you. If you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Great. Okay, that's all I do then. My name is Jerry Rue.
Thank you.
R U E is the last name.
Thank you.
A little bit about me real quick. This is my hometown. I was born and raised in Trenton, New Jersey, before it is what it came today.
Mr. Rue, I just need your address as well. I'm sorry.
Six thirty West State Street.
Thank you.
Interrupting me. Six thirty West State Street.
Thank you.
Apartment seven thirteen. You need anything else? It's a senior citizen apartment, and I got issues about that. But there's so much that I like to get off my chest, I can't do it all in five minutes. So, hopefully, I can come back another time to get some other stuff off my chest. Okay, the first thing, like I said, I was born and raised in Trenton, New Jersey, before it came today. I lived on number nine Water Street before a digestive complex was built. I moved out of there. My father took us out in Hammond Township and grew up. I've been around a few places, and I'm back here in Trenton. And I'm ashamed of the way it is today. I'm ashamed of it. George Washington in seventeen seventy-six did the, from the Constitution, so we can have freedom from the other country, France or whatever. But anyway, I'm proud of this city. And the way it is today, I'm not proud of it, because just think of the tourism can come here to make our economy more. That's one thing. That's on me. That's my thought. Okay, that's the end of that. The next thing is, is like on Hermitage and West State Street. It should be a bus shelter for us, to shelter us from the rain and the snow. I drive a lot. Sometimes I have to take bus transportation. I'm saying, well, these people, they put a makeshift bus, sit down to catch the bus in the rain and the snow. What's up with that? What is the city trying to make it safe for us to move around? They got them downtown. Here and there, they got them. But it's mostly, to me, is need to be used down here where the senior citizens have to come out. They don't have transportation or whatever. Even the people living in the neighborhood come out and catch public transportation. They got to stand out in the rain. Okay. The other thing is, I would like to speak about is West State Street. This is the capital. I got to go like this up and down West State Street, and Mr. Dodge, the bumps, tearing my car up. And then, the police see me driving. Oh, he's drunk. Okay, that's the end of that. Safety for our children in the neighborhoods. A few times, I went to Catwater Park, saw a, our children in our neighborhoods playing baseball. And then I see the other kids come out playing baseball. They all got the same uniform. Our children is like, okay, he, and then we got to go around and stand out on the street and beg on the corner. You got a lot of stores in Trenton, the bodegas. I have no prejudice against that. They helpful. But what are they giving back to the neighborhood? Can I go to this bodega and says, hey, look, we got a sponsor. Can you sponsor our baseball team and buy us uniforms? So, we can look just as professional as the other children that come in? Okay, that's the end of that. That just, my opinion, what happened to us when I was a kid. That just my opinion where it happened to us when I was a kid. We had companies there and we went to play baseball. All of us had uniforms, the same batch. We didn't stand out. My little kid.
This is your time.
So, okay. Anyway. I'm in about the same page.
Excuse me, sir. That's your time. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Faith Ann Pearson. Faith Ann Pearson.
Is she present? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Gotcha.
Hello, City Council. My name is Faith Ann Pearson. I live at 83 Clag Avenue. I have three things to mention. Number one, congratulations on you and I'm sorry the South Ward has to have a runoff. Second, I am thrilled that the state is working with the city to get the rumble strips for Mulberry to help slow down the traffic. And last but not least, is the Trenton garbage men. I don't have any gripes other than the fact that some this one gentleman came and took the garbage and he went and grabbed my recycle can. I told him that's recycling. He didn't know what recycling was. He took the recycle can and threw it in with the garbage. Now, are we supposed to be recycling? Okay, my garbage can is not bright yellow. It's green, the originals. It has the seal on the side for Mercer County. This needs to be addressed because you have so many that are putting garbage out. Some of them are putting their recycling in the garbage plastic bags, tying them up and I'm trying to make the earth that much better. I'm a Native American. My grandmother on my mother's side was a full-blood Lakota Sioux. My mother was born in 1902. She had me at 58, when she was 56 years old. I shouldn't be here today, but I am. And I made it to 66 and I turned 67 in January. Thank you very much for listening.
Is this Carmen Ramos? Thank you.
Good evening, Council Board. My name is Carmen Ramos. I'm a resident and owner of the house, 1138 Genesis Street. I came here now because this morning I came to Mr. Anthony Santora's office. I have to follow up about the repair the sidewalk. Two years ago, they cut the tree, but the sidewalk getting worse and worse and worse and worse. And in February, August 28, 2023, I emailed to him and he responded to me. This is on the list for repair. I have some picture. The contract, the contractor is currently working in the East Ward and will be moving to the South Ward next. August 28, 2023. I came this morning. I have a lot of issue with my family, take care of my family. And I want to see. They told me this morning that it's no money, no money to repair the sidewalk. 1138 Genesis Street. I'm here for 23 years and pay taxes, 23 year pay taxes. And I request only something that the city is supposed to fix it. And they say that it's no money to repair that damage for the city. Thank you.
Madam President, that is all the individuals I have for public comment this time. If it's your wish, may I start with any member of council for civic comment?
Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start by congratulating my council colleagues on their reelection and and wishing our VP good luck in her run for her reelection as well. I want to bring urgency to the fact that New Jersey is in a stage three alert that we are not supposed to be lighting fires for with wood or charcoal because the embers can start little wildfires in our leaves and things like that. So I want to also bring notice that I saw yesterday you cannot light fireworks right now either. So there has been small wildfires throughout the state that our various fire departments have been putting out because of the lack of precipitation. We have not been getting rain in about a month in there in all over New Jersey and they've been battling fires. So I just want everyone to consider this nice weather we're having. You know, we have a habit of lighting fire pits and things and hanging out in the backyard. I love a good backyard hangout with a fire pit. And I found this out from my neighbor when I told her that I was going to have the little mother-daughter thing at my house and like the fire pit. And I was disappointed when I found out, but I definitely understand. So I also want to say on that note as well for people who smoke, while I do not encourage you to litter, but people do have a habit of throwing their buds on the ground when you're done smoking. Please make sure you put them out, whether you're throwing it on the ground or disposing it in the proper receptacles. Be mindful that it's not lit and that you don't start a fire. I want to. I don't really have a whole lot to comment on today, but I did want to comment on Mr. Keon Jones's situation about the involuntary retirement. I don't know a whole lot about this situation, but I'm hoping that, you know, this is something that the administration and and Mr. Jones can discuss and negotiate and come to some kind of agreement on or settlement on. So I would be in favor of seeing that happen tonight and maybe put a pause on moving forward with this resolution or I believe it's a resolution. So that's all that I have. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out and exercising your civic duties and thank you. You know, the first time is very intimidating. So I appreciate you being involved in local government and expressing your opinions. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. I'm sorry. BA Richardson, you had something you want to say? Turn the light on.
That we need to be careful with the comments with litigations. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Williams, we're gonna bounce back and forth tonight. Councilwoman Williams. Oh, she's not here. Okay. Councilman Harrison.
Yeah, it's gonna be one of those evenings. Yeah, I know it. It's gonna be one of, yeah. First, I would like to say, sorry, I was not here. Maria, the vote for you, you're 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 all you're not, you're one of the hardest working employees the cities ever have. So I know you you'll do a phenomenal job because you always do and you always have done. Secondly, I would like to say we just had it the mini pitch, the upgrade at Unity Park. Thank Maria Richardson. Thank Paul Harris. Thank Mayor Goseura. Thank Cozy Cabrera and the Team America. He's got like 450 kids now. He's doing an awesome job. Like to thank Team Trenton United Family Foundation. They did a community cleanup in Wilbert section. They did on Euclid, Tioga, Walnut. We were out there cleaning up. It was awesome. Let's see what else. Then I want to talk about a little about the docket tonight. Three things on the docket. 24, 4, 4, 5, rank choice voting. The voting system that we have now has allowed the best person to win. It's been working for hundreds of years. I don't think we need to change it. Three of us on this city council have actually won in a runoff. And I don't think we would actually be on there if it wasn't for the runoff. 24 dash 074 City Council Retreat. I think it's a great ideal. Would be even better ideal if the DCA was paying for it. So that's my recommendation. Maybe we can get the DCA to pay for that because like you said, this minimum is $25,000, you know, eight hours. If we got more, maybe the DCA will want to pick it up. 24 dash 075, going from the Tuesday and Thursday meetings. Actually, not really for this. I think we, you know, going down to just Tuesday night meetings. But I understand my colleagues' points that, you know, consolidating the meetings. But my 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 take on it was regarding the public. I think the public, given the public an extra day to speak, to come up here would be great for them and having the meetings Tuesdays, Thursdays. But that's based upon my colleagues and how they choose the vote. And I'd also like to thank all my colleagues up here who ran for reelection. We worked hard. I'd like to thank the East Ward residents for everyone who came out and supported me and to all my my friends and 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 people who helped me get to the place I am right now. So thank everybody and let's keep moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. So I wanted to say first, I want to start off with congratulating Councilman Harrison on his reelection, Councilwoman Williams as well. And we wish the best to Councilwoman Jennifer Jenna Figaro Kittenberg on her race. The next thing I wanted to do was talk about the rank choice voting that's going to be coming up. I just wanted to say that is something that I did bring to the table. I felt that it was something that we would help us with money with our city. The more every time we have a runoff, it means we're going to incur more money. We have to have the clerk's office. We have to have our our county, our city office. We have to have the candidates spending more money. So it is all about if you, however, the city, the community decides that they want to rank their preference for winners in whatever election, it is so that we do not have to continuously have runoff. So I actually just considered that it is really a time saver. It is a money saver and allows the city to come out and not have to keep on like we're going to be in holiday season is coming again and we have they're going to come out and again, as we showed two years ago, the numbers go down, down, down. The people get tired with having to come out and vote again and again. Next, I wanted to just reiterate, as I've been talking with the director who is not over there right now. But there was a free rabies clinic. We just had one on November 2. The next one is going to be on November 16. This is for cats. So if you have cats, this is free, F R E E free. It is going to be at the Trenton Animal Shelter, 72 Escher Street from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. So please bring your cat out if they need to have their rabies shot done. Also, I wanted to say thank you to everyone in the West Ward who did vote for me. And even those that didn't vote for me, because I will still represent you to the best of my ability. And we've gotten a lot done in the West Ward over the last almost two years. And there's still so much work to be done, but I'm grateful for another opportunity to continue the work that I started. I might also wanted to piggyback on Councilwoman Edwards. Yes, we are in a state where they're asking everyone to be very cautious. We have not had rain in a very long time. So fire, fire issues can flare up at any given time. So we ask everybody to be very mindful of that, especially with it going to be getting late soon. I mean, I'm cold soon and folks are going to want to light their chimneys. I ask you to be very cautious with that. And then I wanted to just say congratulations, big shout out to Paul Harris on his first major event and the city of Trenton with the Halloween trunk or treat. Absolutely phenomenal, phenomenal job. We had at least three different states that I know there. Trenton, we had New Jersey, we had PA and we had Delaware all present. So that was absolutely major. It was more like a festival than it was more a trunk or treat. You did an absolutely commendable job. You, your team, our amazing fire department and our police department did an outstanding job and kudos to our mayor. I wanted to just say all of that. I thought you said a great job. And of course, that wouldn't have happened without your amazing team. So the recreation department, I commend them as well and everyone for being out. It was great seeing all of the directors out there and and just the spirit of Trenton just resonated so beautifully with everyone just coming out there. I was just see they didn't have any incidents at all, just a fun time. With that, I think I am actually done. So I'm going to read a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank you and I thank everybody for being out here on this evening and I wish you a well and safe evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much, Council President. Just first, I want to, I got several things to talk about, try to be as brief as possible. I want to thank and congratulate City Clerk Brandon Garcia and the Clerk Department for a job well done and administering and conducting this past election on Tuesday alongside the Mercer County Clerk's Office. It's a great endeavor. I know it's a lot of moving parts, but I just want to say bravo. Also, November 20, 5:30 Wednesday night, Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard. We're going to be having our next North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council meeting. Would love to have as many residents, business owners, whomever come. You can you don't necessarily have to be in a North Ward as I found out, but for people to come to the meeting. But it's a great conversation with our police department, particularly often we're blessed to have Director Steve Wilson with us as well as our detective for the North Ward, Cora McNair. So please come and join us. I also want to make a request that I know we have Rowan Towers tonight for a pilot, which I am supportive of. But I wanted to ask that Brunswick Village come back. I've asked about this previously because we also had a pilot discussion with them and offered that to them. But we haven't had them come back to council for a presentation on the renovations since March of 2023. Based on my emails I went through to make sure of that. And we really need to make sure that that happens because a lot was promised. As far as I can tell, renovations are not occurring. If they have, they're very minimal. So I would like to request that we have a presentation from the developers and owners of that property soon. Regarding the rank choice voting, I appreciate my council colleague Frisbee's interest and bringing this forth. But I would not be able to support it myself as I do believe as much as we need to save money, elections are more than about money. We need to make sure that Trentonians, particularly that we no longer have May municipal elections, have a real answer, a real way to vet candidates, figure out who's who, who might represent them best, who wants to do the work by being out there and making sure that they're part of the community. And that's something, whether we have a runoff, especially when you have to work as a candidate a second time, and I had to do that myself, you really have a chance actually as a candidate to meet more voters and find out what they want, not what you want to do, but find out what they want. And I really think it's important that we maintain the system we have, but also one of the things that's really come to light in this past year is making sure we have more voter locations near the neighborhoods where our constituents live. There's been an effort statewide and I believe in the county to consolidate and regionalize voting locations, which isn't fair to our residents, particularly our seniors. Folks who do not have a car, as was mentioned earlier about this great business company in Trenton, we need to have people be able to do things where they live and making folks such as Kingsbury, at one point was going, all the folks at Kingsbury, we're going to have to walk up to Cure Arena, which is a good walk, a dangerous walk in some ways. But because of the efforts of Assemblywoman Velina Reynolds Jackson, myself and others, we were able to thankfully convince the county and also Mr. Garcia, he was very helpful with this, to have a compromise and have the voting station located at Luther Arms Apartments, which made it more fair for the residents, nearly 1,000 of them at Kingsbury, and that should never happen again. Trenton should be consulted much better than it's been previously on where people will have an opportunity to vote. Finally, just want to add a positive. And that is the Trenton High Football Team. If you haven't heard, they finished over 500 for the first time since 2017 and won a share of the West Jersey Football League. I think that's what it's called, Valley Division Championship. So great job by our football team. Hopefully you'll will see some of you at the basketball team games this year. They're very exciting, both the boys and the girls. And actually, my last point is, and I just want to, um, thank my colleagues, Councilwoman Edwards and Councilwoman Frisbee speaking upon us regarding the drought. There was an article today, NJ.com, that it's actually, we broke a record. Uh, we are in thirty-eight days of no precipitation beyond like a mist, they said. So we do need help, um, if we can get as many Trentonians as possible to water the trees in front of their houses. Uh, that will be helped. Many of our trees are distressed and without water, we're going to have bigger problems coming next year. Thank you and God bless everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. I am short and sweet this evening. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being present. Um, thank you to those who presented, um, before us today. Um, thank you to, um, the young Mrs. Brown with you, bringing, bringing your business here to the city of Trenton. It's always a blessing when we get more businesses coming into the city. So I want to say thank you for choosing Trenton and for giving back to our youth in, um, your internship and allowing them and teaching them what to do. Um, me as a special, uh, needs educator, I have a life skills class and I teach my kids a lot of culinary stuff too, without the equipment. So I know it's, it's extremely difficult and so I just want to say thank you, um, for being a person like that in our community. Um, to the city of Trenton, the fire department, the recreation department and the police department. Everyone spoke so highly of the Halloween event. They were all, uh, the fall festival, it was really, really fun for every, just to be walking back to the car and hear so many positive comments from the residents as they were leaving and, um, leaving the event. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um, as far as, uh, the ranked choice voting, I am in between that, that, um, I do not want to see any more runoff. So any way that we can avoid that, it takes a lot of effort. And I think if the people chose the first time, I think it should be what it is. Um, as far as, uh, the sidewalk, I believe they spoke to Ms. Ramos. So I'm hoping that that will be addressed for her, um, because it does bother me that someone would tell her that there's no money. And I know for a fact that there was an employee who just said, we had plenty of money to fix some sidewalks to another resident. So there's a lot of miscommunication going on within our, uh, residents in regards to actual sidewalks. Um, what else I have here? As far as Mr. Jones, I really, I, uh, would like to see, um, some type of resolution for that and would like to see that tabled until that is resolved. Uh, also, that's gone. Just one more comment, I just want to shout out the Trenton Central High School cheerleading team who are competing and I want to wish them the best of luck. As everyone knows, they are my babies and, um, wishing them the best of luck th- this weekend. Other than that, I think that is all I have for everyone. Thank you for your comments and being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President Figaro Kattonberg.
Good evening, everybody. Um, a couple of quick things I just wanted to discuss. Um, Ms. Ramos, I did go outside to speak to you briefly. I didn't know about the situation in front of your home, eleven thirty eight Genesee Street. You did go through the proper channels, speaking to Mr. Santor in the proper department. Um, I wish more residents actually knew the proper channels to go to. So kudos to you for doing that. Um, I do hope and implore you to reach out to your councilwoman or any of the council people. Um, in the future, if you are getting that no response or that stagnant a response, because there are other steps that we could try to take or try to put you on the radar to get things done. I am happy that there is a resolution on the table tonight that we will be discussing for monies for sidewalk repairs. Um, and I'm hoping that, you know, it goes over and we are able to pass it and we can add that to the list to get repaired as quickly as possible. There's so many sidewalks in, in, in Trenton in general, um, that have been torn up just by the trees that were planted decades ago. Um, slate sidewalks and other, um, and I do know that we haven't been able to get a lot of the sidewalks fixed, but we have gotten, you know, just for instance, in the South Ward, twenty-three streets repaved and other things and other trees taken down and things like that. So we are trying to work to get these things done and I do hope that we'll be able to get that done quickly. I did report another, um, sidewalk in the South Ward today, a five oh four Lamerton Street, same thing. And it's added to the list, another one on Genesee Street, a little further down from where you're at, same thing. So I do hope that it will get done as quickly as possible. And in the future, um, please reach out to me if you need to or, uh, or other council members. Coran, you mentioned the, the rehabilitation of the entire city. Um, I do, um, anticipate getting responses and answers from our administration tonight about that because I have questions as well. Um, I am for that, I think, from what I know, from what I've researched, from the information that has been provided to me. Um, because I have been, um, at crossroads with, you know, getting people to be able to purchase lots, empty lots that are stagnant, that, you know, do nothing for the city and we're not collecting taxes or revenue on and people are being really, are being faced with, um, it's, it's very problematic for them to be able to get these properties and it should not be. So I am for that. I just want to make sure that it's fair across the board and that it, um, leads to the, the further redevelopment and rehabilitation that the city needs. So thank you for asking that question. I do look forward to getting answers from our administration about that this evening. Um, with re- with regard to ranked choice voting, I did already voice my opinions about this when it was first, um, brought before the council. Um, with me making phone calls on election night and prior to election night, but primarily on election night and people who had already voted, they already have issues with the concept of voting and what that means and how to do it. And when I asked people, had they voted already, a lot of them said, yeah, I voted right down column A if they were Democrat or I voted right down column B. And they didn't even understand that the partisan versus nonpartisan aspect and that the council race was at the bottom of the ballot and that that's nonpartisan and, you know, the first name, the second name, the third name had nothing to do with partisan politics whatsoever. So that in and of itself is confusing. So to be asking our people to now say, rank who you want by choice, by your favorite or who's going to do the job best or who's in your heart or who's your friend or whatever. One, that is not choosing the right person for the position in my mind. And two, it just makes things so much more confusing. And I think that it is in light, uh, uh, in form of giving a participation trophy or kind of just saying, you know, job well done or just, it's, it's, it's a way of not choosing the best person for the position. I really don't think that we're prepared for that here in the city of Trenton. Um, so I do hope that the discussion goes well and I'm always open minded. I didn't want to talk about the election, but I'm just, enough people brought it up. I do want to congratulate my colleagues. Congratulations to all you on, um, getting your seats back. Um, and I do hope to continue to be able to work with all of you as we move forward. Um, I want to thank Cordelia's statement for her kind words. And I also want to thank everybody who worked on my campaign and just say, this race is not over. I do hope that people continue to support me, continue to fight. Um, politics is not a game for me. I get tired of hearing politics is a game. It's not a game for me. The more I hear that, the more I cringe. I take, um, all of my constituents very seriously, all of their concerns. And I speak up and I not only talk the talk, but I walk the walk. And I really do hope that constituents see that. So moving forward, um, I hold integrity important in all aspects of life. And I just hope that, you know, we do the right thing moving forward into this election. So I want you guys to have a wonderful night and thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Vice President. Figaro Kattonberg. Give me one second. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you staying, um, and listening and we appreciate the comments, um, that were expressed tonight. Um, I just want to say congratulations once again to Maria, our permanent BA now. Also, congratulations to my council colleagues on their reelection, Councilwoman Frisbee, Councilwoman Harrison, Councilwoman Williams. Um, looking forward to working with you all as we continue to move ahead. Council Vice President Figaro Kattonberg, we're looking forward to continue to work with you as we move ahead and wishing you all the very best, um, in your, in your reelection efforts. Um, and then as we push to the runoff that will take place on December the third, my birthday is December the fourth. So, you know, I'm gonna leave it there for the, had me on the front page of the paper. All right, so what I want to say is we are going to discuss a little bit as we move forward, um, into the docket, some of these items and everything. But I do want to shout out Councilwoman Harrison and I thank you, sir, for bringing forward your honest, true and authentic thoughts as well as my other council colleagues that did bring it up. And that is what, um, this is, this is what working together as a council is all about, right? We don't always have to agree on things, but we respectfully talk with each other and work through what it is so that hopefully we can find a happy medium, specifically when it comes to the retreat, right? I do agree, DCA should have the funds and they should take care of us, um, considering that I had asked for this well before the summer. Um, and we were working on it and at one point it was going to be funded by DCA. But then because, um, because the person from DCA kind of drug his feet a little bit, a lot, uh, it went beyond that time. And then by the time we sat down and revisited again, because of the timing, it just didn't work out. And then we had to move it to say, well, November, but then we have the election that's coming up in November. And then that wouldn't be right because now we're too close to that. So now we look to move it to after the next municipal election. Either way, when we look at the budget, there's a lot of funding that rests for council within the city clerk's budget. So that I've, I've worked it out where in the budget this year, we actually started pulling some of that money out to truly see what it is that the council uses versus what the city clerk's office uses, right? Because while it is easy paperwork wise for the city clerk to write things under their account, programmatically, we need to show the difference under the council expenditures. And so we've done that. So there is money that is there that even if we had to move that money again from the city clerk's budget based on, um, projections and what has happened, we could move that for the retreat over. But I do agree that DCA should meet us, um, where we are with that because it only strengthens, strengthens us as a council in doing what it is that we need to do, um, to help this city to be better and, and to get us to where we need to be. I will speak on the other things, um, when we get into it. Um, when we get into the discussion point, uh, further on in the docket. When it comes to the issue of, um, Keon Jones, I'm, I'm not sure what the administration is looking to do with that. Um, I will have to recuse myself from that. But I do, I do believe that listening to everything that was, that was said, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that would be pulled, left, whatever. But I'm looking forward to hearing what's going to happen with that as well. That being said, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Um, appreciate everybody. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President. Moving on with the agenda at this time, uh, I believe we've reached the point. We can ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
May I have a motion to approve communications petitions and reports?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And that brings us to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance twenty-four dash sixty-five, an ordinance amending the rates of compensation for contracting the services of off-duty city police officers. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-four dash sixty-seven, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter fourteen of the code of the city of Trenton, traffic, bus stops, as it applies to Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, Princeton Avenue in the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-four dash sixty-eight, ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seventy-seven of the code of the city of Trenton, fees, tax records. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-four dash sixty-nine, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two ninety-two, vehicles abandoned of the city code of the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
No.
Noted. Vice President Figaro Kattonberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
No.
Noted, Vice, uh, excuse me, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Uh, to, I believe that motion, that motion carries. Res- uh, or, ordinance twenty-four dash seventy-one, an ordinance amending and supplementing the placement and of av- excuse me, the placement of advertising, guide or identification signs, Article one, Chapter two, thirty-three of the city of, city code of the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to resolutions, Madam President, are there any items at this time that you wish to put up for discussion or for that matter, extract from a potential consent agenda?
So I would like to begin to say that I'd like the following pulled for roll call. Vote please, twenty-four, four, forty-four. Cause I know people are going to want to discuss that and get into it. Twenty-four. No, actually, I want to pull it for a discussion so we can talk about that. Not, we can decide with that, it could, if it can go on consent agenda or not. But, um, twenty-four, four, forty-five. Twenty-four, four, fifty. Um, and we have to do the one, we have to take the one out for executive session, right?
Right.
Twenty-four, four, seventy-four. So those are mine for discussion. Again, I'm sorry, twenty-four, four, 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 twenty-four, four, four, five, twenty-four, four, seven, four is roll call. That's not discussion. Twenty-four, four, fifty is for discussion. Are there any of the council members that have any other resolutions that you would like pulled for discussion? Besides what I've noted.
Uh, Council President.
Yes.
Um, I agree with you on twenty-four, four, 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 and also.
Besides what I've noted, Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, twenty-four, four, five, six.
Okay, one second, twenty-four, four, five, six, okay.
And that would be it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
I'm sorry, twenty-four, four, six, six, my bad.
Twenty-four, four.
Six, six.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
Are, are you going to roll call, you said twenty-four, uh, four, four, five and twenty-four, zero, seven, four? Right, and twenty-four, zero, seven, five?
One second, those sound, are those, those are ordinance.
Right, those are.
Yeah, we're on the resolution.
Oh, okay, just, okay.
But yes, sir, we will get into those.
Twenty-four, four, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council members, Councilwoman Frisbee?
There was, um, just two grammatical errors that, uh, needed to be addressed on, one on four, 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 five and the other on four, forty-six. Um, we can make a notation four- We can make a notation, 445, it was, uh, in the second to the last paragraph, where it says, uh, third line up transferred, oh, the voters. And it should be transferred to the voters.
Okay.
And then on 446, there's a T missing. Same thing, I believe it is the word two, oh, on the back of the front page. It, um, has where there's a line that says, while BRS has the skills for the data gathering part of the project, they have no, they have, have no, they have not, it should be.
Note it.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President Figaro Katzenberg.
I had a question for, um, 24, 461. Um, at 24, 458.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So we'll begin with 24, 444. Designating the city of Trenton County of Mercer as an area in need of rehabilitation. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Nick Riney. I am with Mailie Givens, we are redevelopment council to the city. And we can help to answer some questions about this resolution.
Can you turn up, put the mic up towards you a little bit more? Thank you, sir, appreciate it, thank you. So with regard to this resolution, um, can you briefly explain to us what this means, um, with regard to designating the entire city as an area in need of rehabilitation? Explain to us briefly what it is and then what are the benefits to, um, the residents in the city by doing this? And if there are any cons to doing this? Thank you.
Sure, so under the redevelopment law, uh, an area of rehabilitation really allows for the city to, you know, if certain conditions are met, which the, the study that was done, those, those conditions are met. So under the redevelopment law, um, the city is, is able to be designated for rehabilitation. And it gives the city and council broad powers to work with redevelopers on, um, city owned properties, abandoned properties. Uh, it, it removes the, the need for public bidding. Uh, as a council, you can work directly with the redeveloper. You can enter into a redevelopment agreement with that redeveloper. And it really gives the city, uh, broad powers to, um, to work with redevelopers, to bring in those redevelopers you want in the city, uh, with regards to abandoned properties, city owned property. And it, it, it's a tool, right? So you, there are redevelopment areas within the city of Trenton where, you know, when, when we talk about pilots, all of that's done within a redevelopment area. The rehabilitation designation just broadens that to, um, really, really all of the properties, uh, if they meet the, the criteria. And it, again, it just gives you power over certain properties. So you can, again, bring in the people, the redevelopers who are, who need to get the work done, who you're comfortable working with. And, you know, it, it really gives you more control so these properties don't end up in foreclosure. Uh, and especially for city owned property, it, it gives the, you know, it gives the city a leg up in, in regards to that. Let me just go.
Sure. Well, let me just, just some more positive if you can. What, what I see this doing from a practical standpoint, it allows us to negotiate with a small developer. This is the, the home, this is the person who wants to become a homeowner, finds a property in the community and where we can, uh, restrict the conditions of the sale. Uh, one of the problems we've had in the past is we have gone through an auction process where you have outside, um, groups who will come in and they will, uh, through auction process, outbid local people for properties to turn them into rental properties. What this allows us to do is to put a restriction on the redevelopment agreement, uh, with the rehab zones. So we can restrict the sale of the property for homeownership for a period of time. What we're really looking to focus on is getting rid of the absentee landlord process through the auctions. And we are looking to, uh, encourage and work with first time home buyers, home buyers, uh, people from the state, people who already live here. Uh, and, and the best part about it is if, you know, if you have, uh, a, a, you have a home and there's a house two doors down and your daughter or son wants to live in a community, we can designate the, the son and their daughter as the redeveloper, they can come in and rehab the property and they can live there. There's three phases to this though, to understand. First of all, if, if this passes this evening, we have to get DCA approval, which is, we've already had major discussions with DCA. We don't see, really see an issue with that. The other thing that we will be coming in is with an ordinance to set up an abatement program, uh, which just allows, which would be when someone does improvements on their house, it'd be a 20, 40, 60, 80, 100% tax process. So they purchase a home, um, they fix it up, they get a CO. Uh, and what would happen is the first year, you, you pay full taxes on the land, but the improvements, it would be a 20% first year, third, um, 40, 60, 80 up at, at the end of five years. Um, it, they pay full taxes. This allows, again, the first time home buyer, the young couple to get in there, get a property, get money to fix it up and be able to live there while they adjust their budget so they can, uh, benefit, uh, from, from the tax abatement. Uh, that, that's a very large part of this. Also, for people who want to do home improvements, to ta, take a single family home and they want to add on to their house. Okay, so they, I, the, am I going to add on to my house or am I going to move? Am I going to add on to my house or am I going to move? We, we all go, we've seen that people go through that. If they want to do a, say a $40,000 addition to their house, they, we can designate them the redeveloper for that process. And then what they can do is get the abatement for the addition, so they're not paying full taxes on that improvement. So it really helps the already, for the home buyer that exists and who wants to improve their property. Same thing with businesses, we can be working with businesses if they want to do improvements in their properties and it's not in the redevelopment zone. Um, it, it, and the other thing it does is we're going to have models that are simple. Uh, we're going to simplify the process down. There would be a, a short redevelopment agreement that we could do with homeowners or with, with people who want to rehab homes. Uh, and we, we would then, um, be able to process, that we do an ordinance that we bring in front of council. Council still have to make all the approvals for the sales of properties, just like you do with other redevelopment projects, we do under rehab. And, um, move, move, we're trying to move that process along quicker for the, for the residents and the home buyer. The, the biggest difference that you have that I see in rehab compared to redevelopment is there's no eminent domain in rehab. I mean, and you have to designate that in a redevelopment, but there is, there is no process for that. Uh, and it also, the biggest benefit to us is it allows for the negotiated sale of the property, uh, which really benefits the process of, of getting things done faster and eliminating the, the process, the problem with the absentee landlords. Uh, as to negatives, I, I will say that I've seen this done in numerous communities. Um, I, I've seen it done, uh, in Galloway Township, which is somewhat of a middle class, upper middle class community. I've seen it done in Hamilton Township, Atlantic County. Again, middle class where they're able to negotiate. I've seen it done in, in Mount Holly, which improved substantially by, um, doing rehab and redevelopment. So there is a benefit to those. City and the whole of city in Newark is a rehab area. Uh, Woodbridge, which is, which is a real working class, blue collar community has been designated. It, it is one of the tools in our toolbox to transition this community from a landlord based ownership to homeownership, uh, based community. And bringing neighborhoods back to being neighborhoods and eliminating the fact that, you know, you have that absentee landlord who's just trying to profit, grab his profits from the city. Um, and, and sometimes very predatory landlords that we have and, and limit, try to eliminate them out of the process.
Thank you, are there any other council members that have any questions or discussion to this?
Council President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Um, just one quick question, would this, um, still so far, having I were to support an empty vacant property or an abandoned property that's been vacant for a long time and is city owned? Does the homeowners that are, uh, the neighboring homeowners, do they get first bid on it? Or does that just eliminate that process too?
I, I think that if, if we write the, uh, policy right, that, you know, the, the adjoining homeowners would have, um, a first right of refusal in a case, uh, you know, and we, we, it, but it's negotiated. We want to encourage, there, there are what they call side lot programs where people have empty side lots. And one of the things we really want to do through this process is we designate them, do a negotiated sale where they can buy the side lot. And that's a big, that, that's good for, uh, people wanting to add on to a house, but also want to have a side yard, kids can play in and so forth. Uh, and I've seen that been very successful in other towns I've worked in, uh, where, uh, they do the side yard, uh, adjoining programs. It works well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council people with any other questions, comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
I have a lot of questions, uh, regarding this, um. So why did, I was actually hoping we would, might be able to, to hear this at a later date and have a presentation because there's going to be a lot of Trentonian homeowners that have a lot of questions, um, if this is passed tonight. Because they didn't have a, a, a real good chance to have the publicity come out about this, particularly with the election going on. So, uh, I'll start my questions with, uh, does every property in the city, do they become eligible for any rehabilitation money? Or only abandoned properties per se at the state level?
No, every property in the community would be, um, allowed to, with improvements, be allowed to apply for the abatements. And, and the abatements are not like some of the bigger projects the council is talking about. These abatements are automatic. So one of the things we bring in front of council are automatic abatements. Let me say this, we were very transparent in this process. We had brought it to council, council was fully aware of it. Uh, we took it to planning board in an open meeting, uh, had, had a, a public hearing with it. Uh, we were very open there with it. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, we brought it back in front of council and we have been open for questions the whole time. If people had requests, we'd be more than happy to answer questions. I've had other council people call me and, um, you know, there's nothing that, that's been done to hide this process or, or deceive anybody on this process.
Okay, well, I, well, my point is I think the general public, uh, they're not as aware about this. And also I did not call you because I'm not allowed to call you per the Faulkner Act. So my, that's why I have my questions, I wanted to ask, um, but I was hoping that we would have a presentation, but I'll just continue, sir. So I just want to clarify with the tax abatement, that is the same rate would be the same rate, whether it's a new property being redeveloped, or sorry, new, a redeveloped full property or a home improvement, correct?
Right.
An addition, okay, thank you. Uh, also, um, with that, sorry, my phone. So when our planning board was asked about the ordinance, would they ask to approve as far as, was a good policy for planning? Or were they asked to approve this based on it was legal and permissible under municipal government, under land use law? The day, would they ask for their opinion on whether this would be good for the city as far as a planning department would be?
They're, they were open, they were asked, it, it was, they were open for questions. Uh, Councilman Harrison sits on planning board and he can tell you that, you know, it, it was an open discussion as much as they wanted to have. It was nothing shoved down their throat. Uh, you know, we wanted their input on it and that's the reason you have the public hearing is so we can get their input on the process. So, uh, and planning board was very, very open to this, seeing the benefits to the community.
Okay, thank you. Um, and in the report that Taylor Design created for housing economic development, it states that the municipality will not be able to employ eminent domain, which I, I think is great. Because that's something that is a great concern, particularly since the Keo case. Um, so can you explain for those might be watching in, like particularly on Zoom, why they can have all their concerns at ease regarding eminent domain, just so they hear it from you?
Well, I, I'll tell you right up front is, is when you do eminent domain, you can only do eminent domain through a redevelopment plan that designates that, uh, that you can institute eminent domain to take a property. Okay, that is a redevelopment zone, okay? In rehab, there is no authorization to have eminent domain used. There's just none, it can't even be considered.
Thank you. And then, um, one thing, as one drives around our city, and this is a great thing, it's, uh, pretty obvious that there is some improving economic development occurring at a pretty good pace around the city and each of the wards. And, you know, due to market forces. And so that's been done without the area in need of rehabilitation designation. So with these new homes and businesses as well as projects, you know, that will be forthcoming, uh, with, regarding the choice neighborhood program, which I know we're trying to find the rest of the money for. Uh, why should current Trentonian home, Trenton homeowners in all of our neighborhoods not be worried about the designation affecting their home values or their ability to get refinancing? Particularly if the entire city has a designation of area need rehabilitation?
Well, I can tell you right, right off the bat, being an applicant for numerous mortgages in my, in, in my lifetime, um, no one has ever asked me or has ever been brought up in a title search that I know of that in areas of rehabilitation. I cannot see, and like I said, the communities that I've worked in and personally know of, Galloway, Hamilton, Mount Holly, um, that these have, there is absolutely no impact in, in property values. And actually, if you look at the communities I'm talking about, the real estate markets in those communities are thriving. They're, you know, they've been thriving for years. And what it does is establishes the fact that you're getting abandoned properties quickly off the rolls and having them redeveloped as, as quickly as possible. Um, to me, again, for Trenton, it's the small guy, small guy who want, who may want to do 10 properties or five properties or, or the single, single person who wants to rehab a house and, and own and improve, improve their lifestyle and build generational wealth. It's about building that too.
So, and when you originally spoke, um, and I did take notes about Galloway and Hamilton Township in Atlantic County, did you also mention Newark?
Yes.
Okay, so I've done it in Newark too, thank you. And regarding, uh, the timing of this, et cetera, would it not be possible for this to be, uh, tabled or held till the December meeting? So your department can make a presentation and then also in the next, you know, several weeks, if members of the public have any questions that they can ask them? Uh, particularly because I, I know I will have constituents ask me about what is this going to do to my property values? And that's a fair question.
Yeah, and, and, and like I stated, I think in, in, from my experience and, and impacts, and maybe Nick, you, you can address this too. I, I, unless, unless you really know something about land use and about, nobody is even going to know the difference between a rehabilitation area and a redevelopment. Understand something, we have 43 redevelopment zones in the city of Trenton, 43. We're trying to clean those up first. And what this helps is kind of an overlap, while we clean those up, we have this tool, okay? And, and, and I, like I said, I don't know, to delay it, I mean, I, I mean, it, it's one of these things that we've worked on this for at least 90 days, I think, that we've, we've had this working through, working through the planning board. Again, we've got to send this to, after we're done tonight, if it passes, I've got to send and get, uh, DCA to make an approval there. We've got to delay there, okay? After that, and we're going to run a, try to run a parallel process, getting the ordinance done for the abatement, which is going to take sometime into January. So we're, what we're doing right now, if, if you don't pass it, we're just delaying, uh, what we need to do and need to tool for the community.
Um, well, I'm very big proponent of homeownership, particularly as it's going to help us break up the concentrated poverty we have in the city and create multi-generational wealth. So this is of paramount importance that we get a city that has a 39% homeownership rate back to well over 50%, which it was as recently as 2000. But we're also in a city where But we're also in a city where redlining has a history. We're in a city where even just before, I would say, the crash of 2008, many of the banks closed their refinanced mortgages. People had second mortgages. They got home equity lines of credit closed to them. So we're a city that suffered a lot because of designation that we can't, you know, we don't have property values like they have. So you cross the border into Ewing and Hamilton and Lawrence and so forth. So that's a really big concern for me and I would imagine for other people that, you know, realtors might not be a big deal for them. And I know your, your opinion is it's not a big deal, but I have a grave concern, a lot of banks might. And that's something I'd like to be able to learn more about and, you know, kind of get more information on what that could be in some case studies. I'm sure there's got to be at least a case study out of Newark on how that handled. Because that's an environment, a city, it's more like our city. It's an urban city.
I think a rehab zone would actually help financing, bringing, if we can get some of the banking funding that they must dedicate in the communities. And if we can show this a rehab, rehabilitation area, it may actually free up more mortgage funds to bring into the city. I think it's just, and they're going to look at the city, if we've done a rehab area and say, okay, the community has done something to generate more homeownership here. The risk is less for the bank and for the mortgage company to rebuild and get the community built back up.
Okay.
Just real quick.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just if I could chime in, you know, most of these projects, the redevelopers will need to seek financing depending on what the project is. So that will, you know, that'll, you know, if the financing is available and a lot of banks have programs geared towards redevelopment. So I think this is a tool for the housing department to, you know, quickly, not quickly, but like, it's going to allow them to redevelop properties and work with these redevelopers a little more efficiently. And that will, in the long term, work to increase property values. So it's really, you know, thinking about it, thinking about the long-term game. Once you get properties redeveloped and homeownership, you're going to increase your property values overall.
Okay. And then I just have two more questions. The next one's kind of a big one that we get a lot from many Trentonians, which is, would I be able to actually purchase a property versus an LLC? Versus someone who is outside Trenton who comes in? Some streets, there are LLCs, different various names, maybe same owner, some of them with the same LLC that own three, four, seven properties on the same block. So how can the individual Trentonian, you know, be insured that they're going to have a fair chance to buy a house on their block or a house in another neighborhood and not, if we get rid of the auction process, which I think is a good thing, not be muscled by a developer or an LLC?
We, councils of body can set policy that in the negotiated process, that residents and long-term residents of Trenton will have, can have first priority at negotiating the price of the house. And we can take that into consideration. We, let me, let me say this right off the bat. I've been approached probably by 15 different LLC people who have wanted to come in in the last month and a half and buy, buy up a bunch of properties. And we have done everything to say, that's not going to be the policy of what the mayor wants to do. The mayor wants to promote homeownership and that we have to focus our body on homeownership. We're not going, and the best part about it, you guys have control of the body. Because you're the redevelopment entity. If we walk in here and say, we're going to sell X, Y, Z, L, C, 15 properties, you have the ability to say, nope, we're not going to do that. We're going to focus on homeownership. We want the priority to be the local people.
Yeah, and you, you have the ability to say they have to be owner occupied, right? So that keeps the LLCs away. If you're going to rehab, then you're going to promote owner occupied residences. You can do that.
Okay, and then we have the ability to make every single one of these properties we're talking about owner occupied? That's something the administration would also support?
Absolutely. The only one we're going to have.
I just wanted to get that out.
Well, I'm going to tell you this caveat to that. We have multifamily locations here that homeownership, we have some empty apartment buildings that have four or five. And we're going to have to work closely to control. And, and the model we're going to build is going to be a follow-up model where we're just not going to sell property and walk away. There's going to be timelines. There's going to be a process where we have what we're calling them, we're going to have, I wouldn't call them inspectors, but I'd call them partners, the reinvestment partners, where our people will track the properties. First to make sure their homeownership. If we have an LLC comes in and wants to flip a home, you know, we can work with that flipper to do that. But on the flip, the house is going to have to be sold. And that's how we're going to have to enforce it. And I think we can do that. And we've already started that process by denying multiple LLCs to come in and just snatch up properties.
And my final question, this is a big one, is, and I'd like to hear from both of you on this, is regarding what will happen with the zoning process? And how would this be affected and not affected? And I really appreciate Council President asking about the pros and the cons. Because that's one of the things we have to do when I was on zoning board and all zoning boards. The person applying for a variance, applying for everything, they have to present the positive criteria and the negative criteria to a decision.
So by virtue of this resolution, nothing will happen with the existing zoning? Like, if we, what you can do is adopt, you would adopt a redevelopment plan. But that redevelopment, in that redevelopment plan, you would just adopt the existing zoning. If you, if there's a particular project that you're interested in, this also gives you leeway to adopt, you know, like a site-specific redevelopment plan that would change the zoning. So it gives you flexibility, but outright just by adopting this, nothing with the zoning changes. It's a, you have to go through another process, adopt a redevelopment plan, you know, work with the redeveloper if you have a project in mind. But nothing changes just by virtue of this being adopted.
So bulk variances and use variances would always go back to zoning?
Right, so, and it depends if, you know, if we adopt a redevelopment plan based on a particular project, we, you can, as a body, you can create certain bulk standards for a particular project or a particular parcel. But if that's not in place, yes, they would have to go back to the planning board and get all the appropriate approvals and, you know, variances from bulk relief and use.
Thank you.
Yep.
From the practical standpoint, if we run into a home or property that has a zoning issue, then obviously like we will expedite the process and work very closely with the resident. If they want to become residential homeownership, that, you know, to expedite their process, work with them on the redevelopment plan and making sure that they get in front of zoning board in a timely manner. And again, once it clears zoning board, I mean, that's one of the things we're going to have to work out legally, because housing may be a solid contingent on a zoning issue, which will be part of the redevelopment agreement. So, I mean, there's ways we can work with people to make sure that homeownership is the focus.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to start off by saying thank you to Councilwoman Williams for all of the questions that she asks. Since this docket was released to the public, we did notice on social media, there were a lot of conversations and concerns based around this, this resolution and what it means and what it could mean to our city and its homeowners. You know, that homeownership is very scarce in our city. Most of the city is owned by government entities that we don't collect taxes from. I believe that one of the biggest issues with our tax roll and our revenue issues and things like that, the blight in our city, is because we did not have this. You know, we had a lot of redevelopment areas in the city, a few. I'm not going to say a lot. We have a few. And the stipulations based around, those were very stringent. And it led a lot of properties go into auction. And as you had said earlier, a lot of non-Trenton residents participate in that auction and the properties go into their hands. And we have no control over who purchases the property, what the property is going to be used for. I mean, within the zoning variances of that area, of course. But we don't know what it's going to be used for in terms of homeownership or renters or what have you. And I think that this designation would allow us to know more information about who's buying our properties. We have control over who's going to get it and what it's going to be used for. We would know that firsthand. As the redevelopment authority, we also have an Economic Development Subcommittee for Council, which I'm a member of. And we will be addressing these issues as they come along with the administration. So we are doing our due diligence as council and working with the administration to come up with the best strategies that we can to return our 1,500-plus inventory of city-owned properties back to the tax roll. We have not been collecting any revenue from, for decades for some of these properties. And they are falling apart and they've been presenting dangers to our communities in some areas. So I think that auctions can present and has presented many barriers for our residents in the city. They are not able to afford to participate. But if we came up with programs like the dollar program that Baltimore has done, that the city of Trenton has done under Mayor Jackson's administration, we could help city residents and those that want to move into the city achieve homeownership at a more affordable rate and help them get access to grants and loans, lower interest loans and things like that. We would have creative control with a rehabilitation designation. So I wholeheartedly support this. I supported this when the mayor was attempting to get this on a docket under the previous council, which unfortunately they did not allow to happen. So here we are again, fast forwarding a few years later, might I add, still trying to do this. And I can't wait until we talk about land banking again. So, but hopefully this will achieve some of that too. So I love that you're talking about a hand-holding process of maybe having project managers. I don't know if that's the correct term for this, but walking people through the very steps of purchasing the property and getting through the redevelopment and making sure they're doing what they're saying they're going to do when they say they're going to do it and they're not letting another property sit there after they purchased it for years on end and having done nothing. So I just want to, you know, commend the administration for their forward-thinking. And I'm hoping that a lot of people got a great understanding of what this means for our city based on the questions that Councilwoman Williams asked. And I do want to say on the record that I'm not in favor of pulling this, because this has been a long-time conversation. And we will continue to delay progress for our city if we were to push this back to December. So I'm prepared to vote on this tonight. And that's all. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to commend you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President first, and then you, Councilman Harrison. Thank you, sir. Council Vice President.
Good evening. She kind of stated some of the questions that I may have wanted to ask. But one question that I do have is, as it applies to contiguous property owners, how will this affect them? Will they have first preference to these properties still? Or with somebody else, will there be sealed bids? Like, how does that process work?
No, if the property is contiguous and it's non-conforming, they have, you have to offer it to both sides first. But if it's, as a policy decision, if it's going to be where you want to allow people to enlarge their lots, it's not going to interfere with the other development in neighborhood. I mean, that can be a policy decision that makes it the fact that the adjoining homeowner would have first preference on negotiating the property sale. And again, that's something we have to bring back to the body. And we're going to say, hey, we've got this house. You know, we want to be able to sell it to the adjoining property owner. The price may be a little bit less, you know, three or four thousand dollars less. But the adjoining homeowner is going to combine the lots, wants to add on to the house using that tax abatement program. So it allows the flexibility. And it gives, the best part about it to me, from a governing mindset, it gives you control. You've got, you've got control of this process. So it's not something we're running or willy-nilly doing. It's, you know, you guys wouldn't be involved in it.
And being that the entire city would be a rehabilitation zone, redevelopment zone, would all of these matters come before council for approval or not?
Yes.
They would. Okay. And then just my final question, just because I've come upon this and we've had this happen on council in this past few years. When it comes to alleyways, let's say that they're being vacated because they didn't fall under the category of redevelopment.
Right.
Do they now fall into this category or how does that work?
Once we vacate and then it could be, it's a negotiated sale. So it would fall under this, is it, once we vacate the property?
Under the same standards, same pretenses. Okay, thank you so much.
Like you had said, it's small local developers, which is more than likely going to be hiring locally. And it's homeownership. Right now in the city regarding rental properties, we're talking what, $2,000, $3,000 a month? Right, between $2,000 to $3,000 for property, for rental properties, which is crazy.
Yeah, we're talking two bedrooms in the area from 20, from two grand to about 2,400, if not, if not more.
Right, exactly.
And for that, people can, you know, invest in a property. Take that extra money if you can live with your parents or a friend for, for six months while you rehab the property. And the point of project managers, that in the plan that we've drafted, it will have a whole monitoring process of the 45 days to 60 days. Actually, I think I borrowed the program from Detroit and looked at their program. Why reinvent the wheel, you know? And we, I looked at what they were doing and presented it to DCA today at a meeting we had. And I think it's going to help us. And we've got real estate managers right now who we will be able to utilize to do this process and to make sure that it gets to the CEO position. And also works with them on the abatement at the end to make sure they get the abatement program and say, hey, here's the abatement, fill this out, one-page form for the abatement. Not a real big process. And that's, it's an automatic once they get their CEO.
Thank you, Council President.
Are there any more questions from council? So just so we're all clear on this, because different people had different questions that they asked. I'm going to ask each of you, I guess those that asked the question, are you satisfied with the answers that we can move this to the consent agenda before we decide if we're doing consent or roll call vote? So Councilwoman Williams, are you satisfied to put this on consent agenda?
No, I'd like to see it stay as a roll call, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Councilman Harrison? Will you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Edwards? You were good, right? I just want to hear, I know, we're going to roll call it. I just want them to say what they want. Okay, thank you. And then, thank you. Okay. So we'll roll call 24, 444. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next we're on 24, 45. The resolution expressing support for the ranked choice voting. We've heard some discussion earlier from council members. Is there anything else that we want to discuss about this ranked choice voting? I do want to say one thing, because I didn't say anything then. But I do want to just take a moment here now. While I understand the intent behind this and listen to the backstory about it and the information and everything on it, I think as it applies to the city of Trenton, I don't think that this is something that would be good for us. I think that after talking to the superintendent of elections as well as speaking to the Mercer County Clerk about the process and how it would work, while the intent is to save money by not having a runoff, just the educational piece to the public would be just a lot to try to, especially our senior citizens and things like that. Like, they're used to, you know, you pick one person for mayor or the other, not rank one, two, three. And then it could fall to someone's detriment if they don't rank them. And then they just pick like the one and, you know, I don't think that it bodes well for our overall process. Like Councilman Harrison said, he and a couple others have went through, the at-large candidates, we had to go through the runoff as well. It did give us an opportunity to get back. um the runoff as well. It did give us an opportunity to get back out, to reengage with the people. But also another point to this, we don't have to support the ranked choice voting concept. If we want to eliminate the runoff, we can just have a referendum put on the ballot and just let the people decide what they want if they want to eliminate a runoff election. We don't even have to entertain this. And in that way, it's not confusing, it's not, you know, taking people out of sorts, um and and it still accomplishes the same goal. So I just wanted to say those points. If if we ever decided that we wanted to get rid of the runoff, um the referendum, I think, would be the way to go. That way the people can actually speak on what they want um in that area. I would like to say one last thing, though, about that, too. And I'm not being selfish, I'm just being realistic as an at-large council person. I don't even know if anybody could really get fifty-plus-one as an at-large. I mean, we had nine people the last time, it was a whole nightmare. You know, I don't even know if we could consider looking to reduce the percentage. And I don't know if that's like a state thing to say that if an at-large candidate obtained like thirty-six percent or, you know, maybe even visiting something like that. Not that we're afraid of the runoff because, you know, we do our thing and pull through, but just to make it more realistic in that regard. But again, to that, I I thank you for bringing it forward, Councilwoman Frisbee, I understand the intent behind it. But again, we could just move this via referendum and just get rid of the runoff altogether if that's if that's what the people chose that they wanted to do. Are there any other council um colleagues that have anything else to say about this? You want, go ahead. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Um I've been doing my research, as I've stated before, um with this. And while I understand in theory that this could eliminate the runoffs and things and save us a lot of money, I I do err on the side of caution of education. We just finished an unprecedented historic election, right? And we saw how low our voter turnout was. And we're on the system that we're on. And I feel like we need to do more with the system that we have in educating people and getting them to vote in the first place. But then to switch to system to already a voter apathy environment, I feel like would cause a little bit of a setback. Though we are resilient people and we can adapt to anything, my concern is losing voters and Trenton can't afford that. Um but also, I mean, and I wouldn't mind supporting this, it it's not a bad idea, but like I said, because of our low voter turnout and education and where we lack now, that's where my concern lies. And I think for something like this, even though this is only a resolution of support, this isn't adopting the ranked choice voting, I think that to adopt something or to even consider adopting something that would affect voters of this magnitude should be a ballot referendum, just as cannabis was, just as changing our school board from appointed to elected. I think that the public should wholeheartedly be involved and and let them decide on what they feel comfortable with. So um that's where I am with things and I just wanted to be candid about that.
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Um thank you. Uh my opinion is our biggest problem is voter access to polling stations and having more polling stations in the city near the neighborhoods they live in. And I think we should tackle that first before anything else, but I'd like to see this roll called this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes. So I also did some um research and some questioning and to my understanding, first, I want to say thank you. First of all, let me back up because I didn't congratulate my colleagues when I did my uh comment. So congratulations to my colleagues and best wishes to Councilwoman Figaro Kettenberg. I had that written down and never said it, sorry. Um but back to this, um thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee, for presenting this. I do understand her intent also. Um but doing my research, it was it was a bit confusing to me because I was, it was explained to me that even though you may rank someone um number one, and then it's like a point system and therefore somebody who may have been in third place may eventually win if they had enough people rank them at the third or second, second or third place. Um so that was a little bit confusing. As far as the runoff, yes, I would love to see us do without one, um only because I just feel like if the the people choose, they choose. Um so I, too, would agree that I would like to see this on a ballot so that the people can select if they would like to see this um in our city or not. Thanks. And I also would like a roll call.
Anyone else?
Do you know, I was gonna roll a call, too, so.
Right, okay. Councilwoman Frisbee, thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison, go.
Okay. So I want to just thank all of my colleagues for um their feedback on this uh issue, that uh resolution for um ranked choice voting. The intent is not to worry about whether or not friends are going to to, they're going to do it based off of friendship or anything like that. It is about um being most economically sound. So that's why I brought it to the forefront. I um one of the, one of the things that I got a lot, an earful of repeatedly, um after the seven of us were finally, finally, finally elected, was the amount of time that it consumed the city, the residents with, with going out and having to repeatedly go back out there and um vote and revote again and then and waiting for it and and being in the middle of the holidays. And then there was the rain, then there was the snow. And it was so, in my mind, it was to try and save us that. This, what we also, what I don't think everyone is grasping is that this is not that something that would go into law if we adopted it on this evening. This is still something that the state has to um uh make a law. So we, there is time and then that goes with it. You have to educate your community, just like when all of us were using cash and then we went to cash and checks, cash and checks. We went to cash, checks and credit cards. Okay, I'm making my deposit by my hand. Now I can use it and put it on my phone. All of it is about change and and giving yourself the option. So it is about growing our city and we want to make sure that we are staying along with the the pace. We don't want to be left behind. So I as this, and I will bring it back up again at some point, but it is something that I want us to think about. It is something that um is going to help us with moving things forward most more expeditiously. And yes, it is a financial thing and I'm not just talking about for our city. I'm talking about for our state as why, because that is what it is. It's about something that we'd be doing together as a collective with our state. Um but we have the county clerk's office, we have our clerk's office, we have there, there are just so many people who are um a part of this decision that we are making. So it is not just about us. And that's what I'm thinking about. It's the long-term. Who else is this affecting and how is it affecting them? And so I don't want to shortchange our residents and say that they are unable to learn anything new. They can absolutely, all of us can learn something, um whether it is new. There is something to be learned every single day and otherwise we're staying stone age. So I say don't shortchange our residents. Give them the opportunity when it presents itself. This right here is not saying with the next election um in June that we would be doing this. The state has to first um do that. And if prior to the state putting in, even adopting it, then there becomes an educational piece that goes along with that. So then we all get it together. So we all have a better understanding. And that's what I'm trying to make sure that we don't fall behind um the gap gavel. Thank you.
Council President.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um also, I apologize. I did want to congratulate Councilwoman Frisbee on her victory, Councilman Harrison on his victory, and I wish the best to Councilwoman Jennifer Grohl-Kettenberg and her race outcome. Um so I just wanted to nicely correct the work record, but um in the last election, the reason that the runoff was run later than usual would have been the first uh Tuesday in December, but it was moved because Judge Loogie decided to move it, uh which actually created its own expense because I found this out on a Friday night at seven o'clock after we purchased five thousand postcards and couldn't stop the order. Uh so that's something that was beyond our control when it went to a Superior Court judge. But also, I want, do want to share the concern that um I think this would unnecessarily disadvantage um candidates, maybe who aren't as well-financed, aren't as well-known, um aren't as connected. And I think having a system like this, if someone, an insurgent candidate per se, or someone that doesn't have a lot of resources, just goes out and pounds the pavement, wears out their shoes and knocks on a zillion doors, gets to know the people, they should have that chance just as much as someone who isn't resourced, whether, you know, that's this past election or future elections. I don't think we want to take that away where the little guy, little woman has a chance to win. And to me, um as admirable as this idea is, I I think that would disadvantage the the smaller candidate. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Garcia.
Noted.
We're also roll calling twenty-four, four, seventy-four for the executive session.
Right.
All right. So now we're moving on to twenty-four, four, fifty. The Department of Fire and Emergency with the um disability application. I'm going to defer to Director Bridges on this, please.
Uh thank you, Council President. Um while I cannot um comment specifically on Mr. Jones' matter because he does have separate litigation against the city, separate and apart from this, um I can talk about the process. And you may recall, we discussed this process before in connection with workers' compensation claims and when we review those. When an employee is injured such that he or she cannot perform the essential functions of their duties, um they they have the ability to go out on disability and that disability um is on our hands for a year and after a year it goes over to the state's disability. But when we get information, be it from a doctor, um that the employee is never going to be able to return to work, there is a voluntary disability or that employee goes and on his or her own files for disability with the state disability fund, or where that employee is refusing to do that, but we know that this employee is not going to return um to work again. The involuntary simply means we filed it because the employee did not. So with respect to what Mr. Jones was saying, again, that's subject to litigation. Um but I think one of the things he did say, he had some pretty significant injuries. And this is not a Mr. Jones or Mrs. Jones or anybody specific. This is a policy, a process that's followed routinely, systematically, and even-handedly across every employee in the city of Trenton. Once we get information that they cannot perform their jobs because of an injury, um they are offered the opportunity to file for disability on their own. And if they don't do it, we do it for them because we need those positions and we have to fill those positions. We can't have somebody on disability forever.
Thank you. Are they, are, are, is, can't even talk. Is council allowed to ask anything or are we done?
You you may, you may, I mean, yes, with respect to the process.
So basically, y'all ain't pulling this table, did nothing. Y'all, we gonna keep this thing going.
Yes.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions that we could legitimately ask? I guess he gonna tell us if it ain't legitimate. So if you got a question.
Allow me to, and again, and let me talk the.
Tell us what they can't ask.
Let me, let me talk the process, not this case specific. And with any employee that we're putting out on involuntary disability, we have to go to city council for that. If city council were not to approve that, that person would remain on our disability for a year. And then after that, any individual, we're not talking Mr. Jones specifically, would then go over to the state's disability plan at a seventy-five percent voucher. So um that that's really where we are.
Just real quick, only, when it came to the, when it came to the percentage.
That's what I'm trying to.
Be- because of what you're looking to do, based on what he is moving to do. One said, based upon how you're moving, he he would only get forty percent based, rather than if it was accidental, which, and I don't know if I'm touching it because of the the issue with the truck and all of that, injured, I guess, at work, I guess the percentage would have been higher. I'm done.
Let me jump right in.
Go ahead.
If someone is hurt on the job in in the line of duty, that is accidental disability. If they're hurt outside, if they're playing basketball, if they get in an accident on the weekend and they get hurt that way and they can't work, it's normal disability. So there is a percentage for any individual. Again, this is not Mr. Jones specific. If someone, if if a police officer, if a firefighter, if some of the work falls, uh you know, from a crane and they're hurt on job, that's accidental disability. If it's not from a work-related injury, it's normal disability. And the employees have the right and should always consult with an attorney when they're making those applications. And if they believe it's accidental disability, their attorneys or whoever is working on their behalf can advocate for them. But that's, that's a high elevated level. That's the distinction between um voluntary, involuntary, accidental, normal disability.
I do have another question, but I think it's going to cross the line. Can you say what you just?
So, so the process would also be, for any process, again, um that when you file for these involuntary disabilities on behalf of any employee, you put down the basis for their injury and how they were injured. That will make the determination at the state disability level whether or not that is a accidental disability or just a normal um the, a normal um application for disability. So the devil is going to be in the details of what's actually submitted to make the distinction between accidental and normal disability.
Okay. So basically then, for those of us that want to know, it is involuntary at first when it goes in at whatever that percentage rate is. Once the paperwork is turned in on the other side, saying what it was, I guess it pertained to what he said about it being accidental. If they find that that is, then things would change at that time regarding the percentage that they would receive.
And I I don't.
The state would determine it, right?
I don't, I don't know what that meant, but I'm just trying to, I'm gonna try to bring it home. I'm gonna try to bring it home.
Bring us home.
The employee gets gets notification of these filings. The employee always has the right to make their own submission. If they disagree with it being uh submitted as accidental versus normal, the employee always has the ability to say, no, that's not correct. I'm accidental or normal. So this is not something that's taken out of the employee's hands. The employee always has the right to insert him or herself into the process and make the arguments for what type of disability they're applying for.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead. So we're gonna go Councilwoman Frisbee, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Gonzalez possibly. So Frisbee, Williams, possibly Gonzalez.
So I just have one question, because you answered.
Wait, one second, Director Bridges.
Okay, so I'm I'm gonna go, but I have, my question is, does the percentage change based on who file? Who files? So if the employee, employer employee change, does that change what the percentage of?
It it does not.
It does not. So regardless, whatever, it's going to be whatever it is regardless of who files?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from any of the council people with respect to twenty-four, four, dash, fifty?
Yes, yes, Council President, thank you. Uh mine's not necessarily about the claim and involuntary status, but I, uh when um Mr. Jones spoke earlier, he mentioned about in piece of equipment that is outdated.
That's.
Et cetera. I did, I just.
That's, that's again, that's again, part of the litigation where we're kind of being very cautious here.
Yes, I understand.
That's over there with litigation that we have to defend. This just relates to the process. An employee who can no longer work, any employee, once the city has information, they can no longer work. The employee is given the opportunity, he or she, to file for voluntary disability because they can't work anymore. They can't put out fires, they can't run and arrest people, they can't lift a garbage bag, they can't do, they can't work anymore. So they have a choice to do it on their own. And if they don't do it on their own, we do it for them. And if they don't do it on their own, we do it for them. It does not change the percentage. The only reason the percentage would change is if it were accidental versus normal. The process for every employee throughout the city of Trenton.
Councilman, may I approach for a second?
Me?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Council President, I did have one other question. I was just curious if there's a piece of equipment.
Director Bridges?
For, oh, yes, for Director Richardson. I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams, sorry.
One of you guys, is this piece of equipment still and currently in use? That was my question.
I, I don't know if the equipment is still in use.
Can somebody answer that question?
We.
Oh, understood. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So what y'all want to do with this?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
Can we discuss this in executive session? Because there are some like delicate, and there's delicate details that we're like kind of dancing around because we can't talk about certain things in public.
Sure, we could, we more than, we absolutely can discuss this in executive session. Mr. Garcia can announce it.
That'll save us a lot of time right now. Thank you.
Certainly so.
I think that moving forward, that if we ever have anything like this, it should just be in executive session, especially if it's already litigation done. Like, you know what I mean? No disrespect, but we, we could have saved a whole lot of time with that by just throwing it in there. Love your light-cooked food, but we could have just, this was a waste. 24-456.
Thank you very much, Council President.
Roll call.
No, we gonna talk about that in executive session, so we ain't doing nothing with it. I don't know what it means. What are we doing with it? We're talking about it in executive session tonight. And then we'll decide what happens if we do formal action when we come out, right, tonight? Is that, is that correct? Thank you. So it's going to be talked about in executive session tonight, pending litigation. Thank you.
Okay.
24-456, Councilwoman Williams has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So the Department of Finance, someone? Someone? 24-456, under the Department of Finance, the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget, opioid settlement. Thank you.
Thank you, Business Administrator Richardson. So my question regarding, as I was very glad to see it, regarding money finally being dispersed for the settlement. So two questions. Is this a first initial payment on the overall settlement?
No. We have received close to $4 million now. And we are supposed to continue to receive payments for about 18 years.
18 years, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. And then as far as this use, is this money going into general budget? Or is it used for, because I know at one point, the idea when we originally had the cannabis ordinance last year, with the 10% of the cannabis tax money going towards identifying and addressing health disparities, that hopefully some of the opioid settlement money would go to mental health addictions outreach.
This one, this, this money will go to different direct services, including mental health programs. That's correct. So it doesn't go to the general fund, but goes specifically for programs. So the Police Director and the Department of Health are working with us to develop a comprehensive plan to allocate the money to different programs, including, as I mentioned, mental health and addiction, addiction prevention and treatment.
Would that potentially be able to include outreach vans to get to more parts of the city?
Yes. Yes, correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please. I'm sorry, consent, please.
Thank you. So that one's going on consent. Thank you. Thank you. 24-458, Department of Health and Human Services.
Hey.
Good evening. Good evening, Council Vice President.
Hi, good evening. I had raised this question before in docket review, just requesting that we be provided with a list of substantial services or resources or et cetera that have been provided in support services from each of these agencies or organizations. So we're giving money, you know, we're giving so much money to Catholic charities for these homelessness services and such and other organizations. So I wanted to see, could we receive a list of what these services are that these organizations are providing with the money that they're getting? So we're just not seeing, okay, such and such, such as receiving $50,000 and such as receiving 25. What are they doing with the money?
We can provide a report, yes. They provide a report to us in monthly or quarterly, and we can provide that, yes.
Okay, because I did ask to receive that part and I haven't gotten one.
Excuse me, once.
We actually submitted the grant information. Each one of the sub recipients, they basically apply for, and they, they are very specific about the activities that they are going to perform or implement with this funding, but the information wasn't provided.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I didn't receive that.
So who did you? Who did you?
Council Vice President, that was included with the packet that we gave you.
No, there was only monies that were included, only the amounts of money that each of them got, not what the monies went to, not what the monies were applied to. And I discussed that in docket review.
No, after docket review, we submitted all the applications that the subgrantees have, they provide in terms of what activities they are going to be providing. But it's usually direct service or they provide re-entry programs or addiction treatment and that sort of things. It's basically a program looking to prevent and remediate homelessness. And basically, all the subgrantees' activities are around that. They provide shelter and other wraparound services for homeless individuals.
Right, yeah, just in terms of transparency, like I said, I'm okay with them receiving these monies. We need these monies, but I just want to see what did they specifically, what did they get out of the money that was provided to them specifically?
Yes, we can resubmit that information tomorrow. We have it, Dr. Diego, it's a pile like this. So we can send it again tomorrow.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just want to jump in real quick. So Mr. Garcia, they provided what she's asking for, correct?
We did receive information and it was supplemental to resolutions. We provided all that, and if we took all that information, the copies that were received, and we lumped that together for packet pickup.
And it was picked up? The packet was picked up or do you still have?
No, the packet remained and we put it in front of the dais today.
So the packet with the information was never picked up? And now it's here today?
I wasn't made aware that it was ready and it was here on the dais now that I'm looking. Thank you very much.
All right.
It was just here tonight.
Thank you. But they provided it before.
No, that's been here.
Yeah, it's been here.
And it was in our office and it was not picked up.
Right, I just want to clear that up because I know that she had asked for it and I know that they had prepared it and I know.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I wasn't made aware. Thank you.
So we're going on consent?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Councilwoman Frisbee has one question on that, Doctor. I'm sorry, come back. Come, come around. Come back. He was moving, wasn't he?
I'm helping you get your steps. I'm sorry.
He was like, I'm getting out of here.
Mine is real simple. I just wanted to know what these funds, are there, is there room for other organizations? Like, for instance, I know that the Mercer Street Friends, they do a lot. Like, right now, they're about to give the city, they, for Mercer County, they give out over 9,000 turkeys during the month of November. At least 3,000 of those come to the city of Trenton. Is there room for us to give to organizations such as that when it comes to this funding that we have? Being that they do so much and they're doing it for various departments in the community, be it health, be it those who are unhoused, be it those who are just, just at a disadvantage right now? It's my question.
We follow federal guidelines. So they're very specific on the way that we choose these organizations. So as long as they apply and they go through the system, that's how we choose them. But they have to go through those guidelines.
Okay, thank you. See, mine was simple. Go get your steps some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty, so that's on consent agenda, Mr. Garcia, 24-458. 24-461, Council Vice President has a question for, for Mr. Anatiri?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, he had to step out for a moment. Okay. So we'll move to, well, okay, we'll move to 24-466 as he makes his way back. Oh, this is him too. Okay, well, Mr. Anatiri, come on down. You are the next contestant on the council is right. Okay. So we have two for you. One is 24-461, Council Vice President Figueroa.
Yes. Hello, Director Anatiri.
Yes, ma'am, good evening. What is it, Terry? Director of Public Works.
Good evening. I did ask this question or these questions ahead of time, but I wanted them to just be answered publicly for the public. So questions being, so with regards to this resolution, I'm actually excited about it because it is dealing with safety issues at the intersection, one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. And I know that this resolution is in support of what DOT is doing to lower the speed limit, narrow traffic lines, safety improvements, remove the expressway feel and make roadway safer for all users, adding bicycle and pedestrian lines and things, lanes and things of that nature, which is excellent, what we've been asking for. My questions were that I just want answered for the public is, who will be funding this project solely? When will the improvements begin and how long will they take? How long will they take? And will tractor-trailer trucks be diverted from turning onto Cass Street as I believe is already illegal but not readily policed?
Okay, the first question you asked, who is responsible? NJDOT is, the state of New Jersey, they are funding this project. And as far as the trailers, the tractors is concerned, they're gonna have to divert the traffic, you know, so that people will have easy access through the road. The other thing you asked about the dates, I don't have that with me right here. So I can always get that back to you.
Okay, now with regard to the tractor-trailers, it is, it is supposedly illegal for them to turn off of the highway onto Cass Street, onto Leila Street, as it stands, onto Hamilton Avenue. That was pretty much a question. I know that state police would normally police that or whatever. I don't think the city of Trenton police do that policing. So it doesn't get policed as it should. If it's my understanding correct, understanding that it's illegal to turn onto our city public streets off of the highway. So I'm wondering, once this project takes place or once it's finished or whatever, will we be readily policing that so that these tractor-trailers are not damaging our roads, our Cass Street, our Leila Street, our Hamilton Avenue by turning off the highway?
Yes, I'm sure part of the diversion is to have that in plan with the states and working with the municipalities to make sure that happens exactly, so that they stop turning illegal on that, at that access.
Okay, and as far as funding, you said DOT, and just for the record, DOT and only DOT is funding? None of this funding is coming from the city of Trenton, correct?
No, nothing coming from the city of Trenton.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then we have 24-466, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much.
This could go on consent, right? Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Williams, I'm sorry.
Hi, Director. Good to see you. And I wanted to ask you specifically because this, it comes up every week from constituents regarding asphalt. I know that, you know, there's been problems with the contract. Can you kind of go into, not necessarily detail, but, you know, highlight what the situation is, how we got here, and when you expect, hopefully, for this contract situation to be resolved? And then looking into next year, looking into next year, obviously, we'd have a backlog because of what didn't get done this year and what the approach will be to prioritize the streets that didn't get done this year.
Council President?
Yes.
I would like to answer the first part of that question.
Okay.
We are rejecting this bid basically because this was too close to bid rigging. And I, I know that we put the city in a really difficult situation not to be able to do the roads on time. But this company basically submitted a bid. It was the lowest bid. Then when they saw the two other bids, they changed their mind. Right? So, and I understand, I put Director Anatiri in a very, really difficult situation, but the decision that we had to make was to reject the bid because that is illegal and I am not ready to go to jail. So that's the first part. The other part, he will be able to answer.
Thank you.
And thank you, BA, thank you for that. Because that is a very important thing. I wasn't happy about it, but again, she's the one with the money and the one that, because when they come for me, I say, talk to my boss. So, so, and the, the other part of your question that you asked, I believe in four to five months, we'll be able to start, you know, road construction in the city again because we're working on putting out the bid again to have a right type of bid that we're looking for. And then in four to five months, like I said, we should be able to start road construction. And there'll be a lot of road construction in the city in the next four to five months. Because we have a lot of NJDOT projects going on at the same time with the Suresh project.
So we would be frozen basically from doing any work, probably December 1st to March 1st?
Well, we try not to walk around that time because of the weather. Because, you know, you cannot do road construction when the weather is really cold. It's not, it's not gonna last. So we don't do that. That's why we said in the four to five months.
Okay, and then for next year, since you're kind of, kind of need to do what was scheduled for '25 and then catch up on what was supposed to happen in '24, do you foresee a need for additional personnel for next year, seasonal or contract?
Yes, we do, we are going to be putting out some contracts at the same time the city is doing something. That's why I said you're gonna see a lot of activities going on in our roads all over.
Okay, thank you very much, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, consent, please.
Thank you. That's going on consent, Mr. Garcia. All right. That being said, may I have a motion? And I'll move kind of slow as we go through this to add the following resolutions, resolutions, to the consent agenda. 24-446. 24-447. 24-448. 24-449. 24-451. 24-452. 24-453. 24-454. 24-455. 24-456. 24-457. 24-458. 24-459. 24-460. 24-461. 462. 463. 464. 465. 466. 467. 468. 469. 470. 471. 472. 473. And the Walk On For The Women's Face Lights Resolution 475. May I have a motion to put them on consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second. Yes.
Sorry, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Yes, may I have a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Sorry, I missed it.
We're approving the consent.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to ordinances for first reading.
No, we need roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're roll call resolutions, my apologies.
Twenty four.
We still have my, oop. Twenty four dash four forty five.
Four forty four.
Excuse me. Four forty four.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Abstain.
Noted. Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to Resolution twenty four dash four forty five. Resolution expressing support for S one, six, 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 twenty two, A four, zero, four, two, authorizing use of ranked choice voting in municipal and school board elections. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Abstain.
Noted. Vice President Figaro Kattonberg?
No.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Feliciano?
No.
Motion failed. Bro, uh, on to roll call resolution, twenty four dash four seventy four. And that will be the executive session. Move to, uh, next roll call resolution being?
That's it, because we're doing twenty four, four fifty, we're discussing that in executive session. Do we have to do some kind of motion to talk about that or to remove that until then? Or do we just take it in there?
Uh, defer to solicitor.
We just take it. Okay, so that'll be moved and then we'll take action after.
So, Madam President, then if you wanted to ask for a motion, well, no, excuse me, then move on to ordinances at this time. And we'll do executive session last.
Yep.
Ordinances for first reading and introduction, ordinance twenty four dash oh seventy two. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one oh one Holman Avenue and identified on the city tax map block three, three, seven, oh, four, lot one pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve dash thirteen B five to Major Six Eighty Two Properties LLC for the sale price of two thousand five hundred dollars. Madam President, if you want us for motion to approve?
Yeah, may I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Gonzalez.
I didn't hear you.
Gonzalez.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash oh seven four, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Trenton requiring the council to convene in a retreat within sixty days after the reorganization following each Trenton municipal election.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash oh seven five, ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Chapter A three sixteen, Rule two A governing regular meetings of the Trenton City Council.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty four dash seventy six, an ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Section three oh nine dash sixty nine, unauthorized reconnection of services.
May I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And? Council President?
Yes.
Can I just go back really quickly to, I'm not changing my vote on twenty four, zero, seven, four. However, I did mention it to you, I just want to put it on the record that we're going to amend the wording to not, excuse me, to not say mandate and say required.
Yeah, tonight it's just.
Okay.
It's required.
Gotcha. We'll have it fixed.
Well, yeah, but it'll be fixed.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, amend to require, okay. And Madam President, I believe that brings us to executive session.
Yeah, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
And?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
It's my whole thing.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Madam President, prior to that, I'll defer to solicitor for clarification on the items that we're going into executive session for.
Our new executive session discuss ongoing litigation, Durlock versus City of Trenton, personnel issues, correspondence and complaints involving HED and now also Mr. Jones and his, well, the city's application for involuntary disability.
That would lead me to believe that we anticipate formal action to be taken after executive session.
Yes, with respect to four fifty, involuntary disability application.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
Can I have a motion to return from executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry all.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
No, she's not there.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 24-450.
Ma'am, a motion to approve Resolution 24-450.
Second.
Roll call.
One second. Council Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg, can you take the days please? Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Recuse.
Noted. Motion carried.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Nine, what is it now? Nine fifty-six. Thank you.